We'll start with you, going down. We have a little bit of discussion about what we're gonna do for engineering review because it was, I don't know, have to minimize or something like that, but I don't remember.
I think we're all set with it.
Can I read the notice?
Oh.
All right. Okay. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, April 13th, 2016, at 7:00 PM at the West Boylston Town Hall, 140 Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass. In board meeting room, first floor, for a site plan review application as required in the zoning bylaws, Section 3.6, submitted by the West Boylston Municipal Lighting Plant for a proposed solar panel array located on Temple Street, Route 140 and Pierce Street, former West Boylston landfill. Any interested person is invited to attend this meeting, at which time you'll be given the opportunity to be heard. Here we go.
And did you, did you send out the notices?
Return receipts.
Return receipts for brothers?
Do you have green cards for us?
Just a receipt that says you, you know, it went out by registered mail or whatever? With you? Okay.
As long as you can bring them in.
As long as you can bring them in, that's...
I think they're very good presentations.
Go on up and do your thing.
I'll just stand up here and do a quick introduction to the project.
Yep.
I have a picture here for the audience if anyone wants to see it. And we're looking forward to seeing it. Thanks again for having us come to the site plan review. But we're proposing to put a two-megawatt solar system on top of the cap landfill. The property is about 15 acres. We propose to fence in about six acres and utilize about five acres of that six-acre site with the solar field. Again, it'll be about two megawatts. I think previously I said it might generate up to about 10% of our power.
Yeah.
The bids came in and the spacing got a little bit wider than anticipated, so we're... The site is actually a little bit smaller in megawatts and a little bit less in energy, so it's about 5% of our energy.
Oh, okay.
And the pricing is, of course, lower, so our project cost is in the $4 million range or something like this. But that was also decreased because of the lower size. So it all, it's all perspective, I guess, as what they could fit within that six-acre fenced-in area. And we picked the best area along the, on top of the cap, avoiding this lower area down here on, to the west that it loses. And basically picking the best land to utilize. What we propose is an entrance specifically during construction and afterwards, where there's a bus turnaround, where there's a curb cut already, and the pavement goes off the road, almost into the site. And if you look at the original drawings of the site, the cap actually is much further in than what we proposed to where our equipment is. So we're not gonna even be on the cap even where our proposed gravel laydown areas and access road.
That's good.
So it's, it's pretty good. We're avoiding the cap even in this front area. We're also proposing to put a gate in the back area because Pierce Street is actually our, the access road to the existing substation. I envision using the substation as a laydown area for any of the more valuable equipment like panels and inverters or anything else. It's right down the street, it's gated, it's also, we have cameras in there and alarms, so it could be a good laydown area if this gets crowded along Temple Street. Or as an alternative, we can use Pierce Street because it's just really just a dirt road and access road to the substation in the, in the back woody gravel dump area, I think they call it. I'm not exactly sure. So that's the project as in general. We're here for site plan review. There's not a lot of things that we trigger through the site plan review process. The biggest thing related to the permits is probably stormwater management, water runoff. And I have both Whitman and Bingham here and Weston and Sampson here discuss more of the technical details on the biggest things that probably could be impacted from a project like this. And I'll let, I'll let Weston and Sampson cover it first because the biggest thing is the DEP post-closure permit that we're applying for. It's already been applied for and it's in process. But in order to use a cap landfill, we have to have that permit. That'll be our final permit probably that we'll receive before we give the go-ahead for construction. So with that, I'll let you, Steve here from Weston and Sampson, and he can cover some of the stuff related to a post-closure use of a cap landfill.
Sure. Thanks, John. Again, my name is Steve Wia from Weston and Sampson Engineers. We appreciate working collaboratively with Whitman and Bingham in getting this project developed. There's a lot of pieces that go into a solar project of this scale. But you have before you an application for site plan review in accordance with 3.6 of your bylaw. John also has an application for the ZVA to get the special permit. Just, there's, already submitted and received a favorable review from the Mass Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. There's no priority habitat or estimated habitat that was sent in and we received back in October. There's a Conservation Commission review that's already been done. A negative determination of applicability was received on February 29th, and the Mass Historic Commission found no significant effect on any of the archaeological or historical on, on March 18th. Again, as John said, the entire parcel is probably 22 acres when it was deeded over to the city back in 1942, I think. And there's nine acres, which is considered the landfill, and six within the fenced enclosure area where the solar array is gonna occur. The application that we have pending before the DEP was filed on March 18th, and it's being reviewed in, I'm sorry, March 14th, and we expect comments or review within a 30-day period. Generally speaking, Weston and Sampson was actually involved. I wasn't here in 1994 at the company. But the landfill historically was, was filled between the '40s and the early '70s. And, and the closure was, was formally started in 1993. I think that the, the record decision or, or record documents were filed in December of 1994. And it's basically a soil cap. You have a lot of different types of landfill closure. This happens to be one of the simpler ones in terms of it's about four feet from where the waste is. There's a six-inch gas venting layer, 18 inches of low permeability clay to prevent leachate from going through that landfill and, and coming out in the form of groundwater contamination. There's a 12-inch sand drainage layer and a 12-inch vegetative support layer, so you have four feet of soil covering that. In terms of the site plan, the review, all of the dimensions, I think Whitman and Bingham showed on there what the setbacks were relative to all of the property boundaries. And in terms of the solar itself, we thought that one of the more important things perhaps to give you folks was some pictures of what we expect the system to look like because that's really, comes down to what we're talking about here. These are fairly common. There's a lot of solar on closed landfills in Massachusetts. It was an initiative that spurred a lot of solar development, so there, there are hundreds of megawatts probably in the close to 1,600 megawatts that's been installed and up and running in Massachusetts. So that, in a nutshell, probably, John, from the estimates, you're talking 1.8 to 2.4 million kilowatt-hours of electricity per year. And depending on how big the average home is, there's estimates of somewhere between 220 or 250 homes that that would power on average. And so with that, that's the plan and the sort of permitting history. And if you had questions, I'd offer to answer those in conjunction with the engineers from Whitman and Bingham.
Just flip it through this just quickly. There was this pour-in-place footing, is that what you're gonna do?
That's what we anticipated in terms of, so Weston and Sampson, in our capacity in collaboration with the other engineers, that's where a lot of the developers are going. And so they went out for competitive public RFP to get the best price to install it. They're evaluating bids that came in, I think, just last week.
Yep. And the two lowest bids are proposing a game-changing footing, which is the same, same on plan.
And it's the reason that we've showed what that looks like. And again, that's just a trend towards everybody is trying to figure out the fastest, cheapest way to install this.
Okay. And I've expressed my desire to have it look like your other one. All the panels straight and, and level. I've said that every time this comes out, you know? I, I hope it comes out like, any reason to think it wouldn't, I guess, or?
It won't be as smooth as that, purposely, well, the terrain there.
I know, that's right. And you had those, the pilings leveled or whatever, putting in and leveled out.
Pretty much we follow the terrain on the cap, but at least it's not undulating so much.
Yeah, okay.
That'll look like a wave. But everything that we do put on it will be a ballast-type system, so it'll all be either ground mount or ballasted on top of the cap.
Well, it has to be, isn't it the case?
There are pros and cons with both precast and cast-in-place. The cast-in-place does allow the installer to level it before he pours it, and so there's a little bit more flexibility with that. And, and there is quite a bit of flexibility in the racking itself, and so it comes down to the, the workmanship and the quality of the contractor that ultimately gets selected.
Is there an efficiency gain when they're not, you know, when the side ones are kind of not looking directly at the sun but kind of tipping down? Is there sort of a lack of lesser efficient panel then? Just because they're not getting direct sunlight?
I don't know if the cost of that way, they're making it flat, I guess.
Okay.
Because a lot, a lot of the ones I see on landfill or any kind of slope like this, they're gonna, they're gonna keep it the same slope as the land is.
I work in Webster and they just installed it, I don't know, six months ago or something like that, with the cast-in, the precast ones.
Right.
You know? A truck every day. Three times a day going by with a truck.
From our experience, there's optimum tilt angles and row spacing to minimize shading. The optimum tilt angle is the latitude at which the site is, so it's 42 degrees. But that 42 ends up being a little bit tall, and so you sacrifice space, and so the idea is to lay them down. You minimize a little bit of the wind load, the snow load that gets on them. These are generally self-cleaning. 20 degrees is an average manufacturer or installer's angle for optimizing, optimizing snow shedding and washing of the panel to get dust off of them type.
Is that what your other ones are?
The other ones are closer to 45. They're a little bit steeper.
That's closer to optimal, I think, yeah.
Okay. All right, I mean, this is sort of inconsequential to what we're responsible for here.
These will be closer to 30 degrees. The two lowest bids came back with a 30-degree, you know, southern orientation, so it's, it's pretty close. You won't know as much difference between 25 or 30 or 35 degrees, but it'll be right, it'll be less angle than what you see on Paul Tippett Drive.
Okay. Any other concerns or questions? Do you have any questions about this?
That part, no.
No?
Are you gonna talk about the stormwater stuff? You said that was...
Sure.
I don't need to jump unless people have more questions. No, let him present.
So as you see on the, oh, the handle right there, you can see the ballast system that we're looking at for the panels. And so throughout the array, I kind of show a rough spacing. Obviously, depending on who the lowest bidder is, they're gonna come back with exactly what their spacing is gonna be for the panels and the ballast. But we took the basic industry standard of what the ballast layout should be. And the other thing that we took into account basically was, all the fencing here is also gonna be on the ballast in the plans that we...
Oh, is it?
Yeah, because again, same thing as, as your array, you can't penetrate into the cap, so we show the fence to be in, in a ballast system. I know it didn't come in the handle, but I know in the design plans, we do show a cross-section for a typical fence ballast also. And so it'll be very similar, where they'll bring in the concrete ballast and place the fence on a concrete ballast. Another item that we took into account was a little bit of tree clearing here in the northwest corner, along the southernly boundary, and also along Route 140 to take care of any shading issues because of the way the site sets up. There's not a lot of tree clearing that would really have to occur. And once the company is chosen, they'll come out here, they'll do their own shade study and figure out exactly what, how many trees. But we were conservative in our calculation of how many trees would be taken down. They might come back and say a little less trees, but when we're looking at a stormwater calculation, we were more conservative along with the, like I said, the northwest of the corner, the southernly corner. The trees along Route 140 will have to come down obviously because of the shading, I'm pretty mature at this point for what we're doing here. There's no growth to the north that will have to come down as far as this because they never have any concerns with that, so the north, north growth. And so we took account of that, like I said, the ballast for the panels, the ballast for the fence, and also the change here with regards to the driveway that comes in. There'll be a little floss of pavement, there'll be a gravel driveway that we put in, there'll be a concrete pad put down for the electrical equipment. So we took account of all those items, being basically a change in the land surface on the landfill. Being conservative, saying that because there are, is some grass out there, there is a field out there, we know there's obviously a liner under that field that doesn't necessarily act as your lawn out here, but we're trying to be as conservative as we can to make sure that, just looking at the impact that could possibly happen on this. Even taking all those conservative factors, we were only showing a very small increase in runoff. And I know in the letter that I gave to the, to the board, my cover letter and also in the drainage calculations, I outlined what those increases would be. And for the 10-year storm, we're looking at .01 CFS, you know, cubic feet per second, so it's, you know, minimum. You know, .03 for a 25-year storm and .14 CFS for a 100-year storm. And when we're looking at where this runoff increase would happen, it would happen into the swale that exists now that was created when the landfill came in, and then it'll go onto the abiding property of the state, basically getting eaten up by the wetlands that feed to the reservoir. And like I said, because we're looking at that kind of increase, we didn't feel that it was necessary to do any kind of drainage mitigation on the site because of this building. Again, like I said, we were being conservative.
Why are you thinking increases or decreases, or?
If, if we're to act like a field, which I know, like I said, because of the liner, we know it doesn't necessarily act as a field, but we were being conservative, that it be thought, in our drainage calculations, that it acted like a field, we show a very small increase because of the concrete ballast, because we're obviously adding...
There's a little bit of, of an impervious spot there?
Correct, correct. It takes up whatever that footage across the entire site, each location that ballast would be, it takes up that small portion of the site that can't absorb the water. But again, like I said, because it's a landfill, the landfill still doesn't operate like a real field.
How does the cap, I mean, you were talking about the, the four feet of, you know, earth and clay.
Between the... Right, exactly. So there's four feet of earth, is there a clay layer, is that what you were saying, Steve, right? Is that the initial layer?
There's a six-inch gas venting layer, 18 inches of a low permeability clay.
Yep.
Then another 12 inches of sand drainage, and then another 12 inches of vegetative support, like a little or loan, to keep the grass growing.
Yep.
The grass is there to prevent erosion. And so with the cast-in-place, there's very little excavation or earth moving on the site, very little will be disturbed. And so the grass will, will act as a natural break for the largest of the two catchment areas that drains to the south. There's already a swale and a riprap drain that's, that's in place that the amount of impervious that we're talking about with the concrete ballast is relatively small. And again, that's conservative approach that Wes described because technically, everything that's being placed on top of the landfill, all of that water, you know, the queue in is gonna be equal to the queue out before and after construction in reality. But it's modeled at a very conservative level, and we showed just...
For the slight increase.
Very small increase. And maybe we're talking 100-year storm, we're talking .14 CFS, it's nothing. You would never notice that, I mean, that's exact, I mean, you could go out there and pour a couple gallons of water out there and you can make the same difference. There's no really increase.
Any more questions?
Well, no, just, your statement that it's .14 CFS is true. The trouble is, the existing flow is .30, so it's a 50%, it's a 50% increase.
Again, being conservative though, because the initial material there was, I believe was an e-s soil.
Well, it's sand, it's a percable sand, so the water's gonna come and go into the sand and then go down the hill.
Well, until you get to that clay, exactly. So you have two feet...
Let's just say above the clay.
It's gonna hit the clay and then it's all gonna run out this way. It's gonna do the same thing afterwards.
Yeah, no, I don't, I mean, I, just the way you're representing it, it's, it is a small amount, but it is a percentage increase. But I guess, my question, it may not be, well, the only, the bigger thing is, we need a stamp and a signature on the calculations.
Okay. I can do that, we can, we can give you a stamp on the cover.
So that was a key.
And typically, the reason we, to be honest with you, we typically don't stamp the cover, because we usually stamp the plans that, that refers to, I guess, and that's...
Yeah, we just like to do it. Or, or if you want to just do a certification that the calculations were done.
We'll stamp the cover, but that's not...
You said you had a cover letter, if you stamped the cover letter.
No, I signed it, I signed it, I didn't stamp it though.
However, we just need some certification that you're standing behind these calcs.
Yeah, that's fine.
So that's fine.
And so just, so the board, and I know obviously you have your site plan criteria. In the letter, we did go through your 10 points for your site plan review criteria. I don't know if you wanted to go over that now, or if you wanna go over that later on, or if you've already had a chance to read through the letter to make sure that...
I haven't looked at that.
This is the letter?
Yes, yeah.
The 10 points of the, are those the DEP's stormwater standards?
No, it's just part of Section 3.6 of your...
3.6 by law, okay.
Correct. Yeah, and so I went right through the 10 points of your regulation.
Did you meet all of them?
And so I can go over and out with it.
Did you meet all of them?
All the ones that are applicable. Because some of them are applicable to the project.
We don't need to go through everything, I guess. I mean, it's, it is an easy site, I think it should work.
That's kind of our, I guess, opinion of the site was it's...
And as far, and as far as the runoff, what are you doing for construction site erosion control?
So we do show road control barriers on here, and so I know, we had a conversation with Weston and Sampson about that, about do we go with the straw waddles or the hay bales and silt fence? And so we're gonna, I know Conservation Commission didn't have a preference on that, so we're waiting for DEP's comments back on that, on their review of the...
As a suggestion to help address your flow calculations, you can put in like a 10-inch or a 12-inch compost tube.
Yes, yeah.
Leave it in place so that in the future you get this tube, because you're gonna be right on the contour.
Right.
Put that in place, you get the storage behind it, and that'll easily accommodate that.
Correct.
So you put the, put that in as your erosion control.
And leave it in place, yeah.
Should be all set.
Right. And we would, I think we wrote into the permit application that it would be installed where appropriate and where needed on the site, on the downstream side, for, you know, to minimize those impacts.
Yeah, I think you, I'm not sure, I would think you want this to the right, so it's gonna be on the west side and the south side there.
Yeah, and that's what we show, we basically show the experience.
And I'm pretty sure back 1998 or '07 or so, when I was looking at this the last time, there's a retention basin for this whole area as well, so it doesn't even go into the streams, it goes into a retention basin, I think, where the, where the dump site is, behind the power station, so.
Yeah, south of the riprap that you see there.
So that we're covered all around, but I think having that wa, not a wattle, actually, a compost tube.
Yeah, yeah.
They're using those over at the reservoir, 12, cause of...
Could you just take them?
Are they effective over there?
They just put them in, but they're, I mean, they're 12 inches, so they're not moving, and they're staked every 10 or 15 feet, so they're very effective. And then all you have to do is you take a, instead of trying to pull up the old silt fence and hay bales, and they never get pulled up, you just take a box cutter and you slice it, and you throw seed on it if there's not already stuff growing, and it stays in place. The only guys complaining are the guys running the tractor if they need to mow over it. After, they'll mow it down a little bit or pack it down the first couple of tries, but that'll be it.
Verification mentions also traffic, traffic calculations, did you do any?
So we did not provide traffic calculation. So the only traffic you would see is gonna be during construction.
Yeah.
After the fact, I mean, you guys are bringing up the ones every month, the ones every month.
Once a month.
Right, you'd probably be to your substation more than you go in there.
We normally don't go, we remotely monitor it. We monitor like we monitor the existing solar farm. Very rarely do we have to go there, maybe once every couple of months.
Yeah, no, I was, I was more, more interested in asking you what you found as a, as anything. So that's good, I, I understand and I, I agree, there's probably a...
What about maintenance of the area?
We'll be responsible for maintaining the cap from here on out.
Yeah.
So we'll be responsible for scheduling and coordinating the mowing. The, the gas venting monitoring will take over for the town. We'll also take over the annual inspection for the DEP, the landfill cap itself, for erosion and settling and anything like that. So we'll take care of all that from, from now on, and that's part of our deal with the towns of West Boylston directly and say, all right, if we can utilize the land, I'll take responsibility for that, especially since we're, we're gonna be on top of it, and we're gonna impact it more than anybody, so we must, we'll be responsible for it.
Are you also doing the sampling?
Any monitoring, any monitoring, any monitoring we'll be responsible for.
Right, excellent.
It's a, it's about $9,000 a year that we're taking over for the town.
Those violations.
We won't have those anymore.
Anymore, okay.
What you, from '93 till now is basically the same as what it's been.
Always been.
It's been a lot of settling, so.
And then the only other thing was, are you leaving the school bus turnaround that's there?
Yes.
Looks like you're, you got a straight line with your panels.
Our, our gravel is be, is beyond that. So the turn, the bus turnaround remains, and our gravel area is actually, if you look at the tree line that's there now, we're inside of that on the project.
Okay, so it's...
So the pavement within the layout's gonna stay the way it is?
Yes, okay, good. And that doesn't, they don't need to go a little further in, or they have enough, the bus folks have enough?
They can't, they can't drive any further in than they do now, and so it's all maintain that.
That's it.
That's right, because there's the fence.
Well, there's, it was, it was a fence, now it's, and there's some wells actually in the vicinity too, so they...
Monitor wells.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we just stamp the certification, and you're, I say, I saw you noted in here that you were in compliance with the intent of the DEP standards.
Yep. And so we are, obviously, we are near any resource areas with this, and that's why we filed the RDA with Conservation Commission to determine, you know, add a determination on board. But as part of the calculations, the standard that we would look at is erosion control, scouring and so forth. We are, already have our NEPA's permit in place, so whenever construction does start, and so any of the basically applicable permit or standards that we thought this project would have to meet, we've met those, I guess, is, is how we would look at it.
Because our standards in the site plan review say you have to meet DEP standards, whether it's a, next to a river or not.
Yep, and so that's, like I said, the applicable standards that we would have this project have to meet, yes, that we...
All right, then I think you need to, because that's different than what our bylaw says, so you're gonna have to ask for a waiver of our site plan review for, for that. Either you meet the DEP standards or you...
No, but if you look at the standards though, you can check out a put hole, not a put hole. And so it's not a re, well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't consider it redevelopment, so we didn't, we wouldn't check out redevelopment, we wouldn't, we aren't doing recharge out here, so we wouldn't necessarily show recharge calculations.
And the DEP, they're gonna, they'll issue a letter with orders of conditions, and the applicant will comply with that too. In other words...
Right, the Conservation Commission will, or the DEP will.
The DEP will.
The DEP will have a list of, of conditions as well.
So as part of their post-closure use permit that they're doing, they're gonna review the stormwater calculations also. It's not, it's not the same department, but as part of the permit, they do review the calculations also, make sure that they're satisfied.
So it sounds like they're saying they meet DEP for where it's appropriate.
Right.
Do you agree, or you wanna reveal?
I'm not sure, either you meet them or you don't, I guess I see it.
Well, so if we...
Inappropriate, it sounds like you're saying if it doesn't apply to this project, you didn't deal with it.
Right, but if you, if you come in and you say, okay, you normally don't need to be TSS because you don't really have too much impervious area.
Correct.
But that's gonna get contained somewhere, you meet it. You show that, okay, we meet that standard. It's not it doesn't apply, you actually say somehow that you're meeting it.
We would say currently, we are, we aren't exacerbating the issue that they currently have on the site. have on the site, and so I guess in that case, if you, if we were going to file, we would, we could file redevelopment if we really wanted to, because we would redevelop the landfill, and then.
I thought redevelopment was, if it's an impervious area, then you get to claim it as redevelopment, you don't get redevelopment just because it's already been developed. I mean, just because it's developed, if it's grass, if it were a field and you were redeveloping it, or putting a parking lot there, you would have to meet the full DEP standards, it wouldn't be a redevelopment, get any, you wouldn't get any break on the characteristics of the parking lot runoff.
If you're not making.
If it was a field, and you're not making it paved.
We're not making it paved though, we're actually removing pavement as part of this, a small portion of pavement.
So that's where we need to see something to say, I mean, I think we're okay, it's not a, it's not a big deal, we just, you even need to ask for a waiver.
Well, I guess if you're wrestling with TSS, we're not, we're not asking, we're not improving the TSS requirement, conditions up there, I guess is my issue with that, is, I know you said there's a detention basin up there, but I'm not sure a detention basin would technically meet the requirements nowadays for DEPs eighty percent TSS removal.
I actually said it was a retention basin, but.
Well, either, either way, but without knowing that it's a retention basin or detention basin, I wouldn't, under the current regulations, it probably doesn't meet eighty, eighty percent TSS removal, under the old regulations it probably did, but they look at it a little differently now.
If it's a, well, I don't know, what we'd be looking for is either you're asking for a waiver on the conditions, or how you meet the conditions, you can fill out the stormwater, usually we look at the stormwater checklist, you submit the stormwater checklist, the DEP checklist, and show us that you either meet it, or we're not having, I mean, if you don't have any impervious added, that solves a lot of the problems, but that's what we want to, we want to be able to say that and document it, is all.
So I guess, from that standpoint, we don't have any dirty impervious added, I guess is how we would look at it, because there is going to be a small increase.
It's not how you look at it, it's what the regs say, and I want to just follow what the regs say.
All right, so we'll be asking for a waiver from that, because, like I said, it's such a small area, but we'll ask for a waiver from that, because.
Just to make it formalized, okay, that'd be perfect.
It'd be, it's hard to either.
Is that, is that the only one, only waiver you think you'd be asking, or?
Uh, I mean, the TSS, and probably the, you know, we're talking, like I said, we do show, obviously, we do show a small increase in runoff.
But if you can, you put the compost tubes in there, you will be all set with that.
And even that, I think, I still think we're being conservative in the manner, because you're not getting the recharge back into the ground above the liner, currently, because it's hitting that clay layer and all flowing down.
All flowing down.
Well, it's flowing within the stone, I mean, that's why, that's why they have the stone there, I mean.
Well, and the stone's there to get, you know, some storage, I guess, to get the water.
And then, and then transpires, and it's gone, but, I mean, again, it's not a huge problem, I.
And so, I guess it.
We just want to have it here.
I think, second state, we might have to ask for a waiver, because we do show a small increase.
Okay.
For that standard, so I'll, I'll list those standards out, and tell you which ones we do meet, and which ones we don't meet, and that's.
You can send that in email.
The stormwater report usually does that, the stormwater, DEP stormwater checklist.
Well, they don't have an option to ask for a waiver, I guess, with the checklist, that's not.
Well, no, you show us the checklist, you write a letter for the waiver, that's, but the checklist has a stamp on it and a certification, is what we need, because we, we are not having to go to our engineer, for the engineer review, to have them say it's okay, but this will save you a couple thousand dollars.
Okay, so, I mean, you, one thing I want to do is I'm going to read the police department and the fire departments, they both approved the project, police department had no comment, fire department said, the solar field will be monitored and maintained by the West Wilson Municipal Light Plant, solar array will be protected from traffic by the appropriate fencing, DEP has no problem with the vent, I'm just releasing any type of gas at this time, fire department will work with the West Wilson Municipal Light Plant to come up with an emergency action plan, approved, so that's all.
Just so they're in on minutes.
That makes sense, good. Do you guys have any more questions, comments?
How many, how much trees removal will be there in this site, the one forty site? You said, you said tree removal.
Yep, so we're looking at tree removal, in this area here, and so I don't, I, we didn't count how many trees would have to be removed, I don't, I don't even know.
Are the entire, all the trees?
So from basically the fence here, all the way down to the fence here, would have to be removed along one forty, I guess, yes, because everything, everything up there's tall enough that's going to cause a shading effect on the array.
And presumably the, the fence that you're proposing, is that a chain link fence?
Sure, yes.
Are you proposing any landscaping, a couple of small shrubs here and there to help it look nice, or?
We could, if we had that, we discussed that internally and said if you would have asked for it.
I think that, I'm not sure, you know, it's, it's along the road, so it's not usually one of the conditions, but we usually, in the site plan review, you said there were ten items, that's one of the ten items, what was that answer?
It's, it's kind of.
Opens number eight, landscaping.
Yep, and so, and so my answer was, the, the solar array was located in a cap landfill, the existing grass meadow cover on the landfill remain under the panels, and I stated the tree clearing was proposed along the south, east and northwest corner of the project to reduce shading caused by the trees.
So you're not really addressing it, you're just saying what's going on, okay, we would probably want to have.
Okay, and that's.
Actually, a little shrub.
Yeah, yeah, something that's okay with, something so it's going to break up, so it's not, you're looking at the whole system.
The whole place looks kind of abused, because nothing's happened to it in years, so if you want to just, just take a look at it and make it look presentable.
If there are shrubs, you can save it, that's good too, but.
Yeah, it was, it's, it's all, it's, it's not church trees. Yeah, it's all thinner and taller, but nothing causes, causes shade.
Oh yeah, no, but I mean, it just like, nothing's been done in that area for a long time, it just looks, you know.
Just make it look, I mean, that's, I mean, we.
Cleaning up and make.
And we can make that a condition that will, like.
That's fine, that's fair.
Let me just make it look presentable, like, I mean, like you are the one that looks good, I mean.
And, and there's nothing there.
But, I mean, but, but the lawn is there, I mean, it doesn't look like it's a.
Yeah, it looks like it looked previously, essentially.
Yeah, that's what it was.
It was probably in better shape then.
Well, it was a big demolished house.
Demolished house, yeah.
Well, yeah, in the corner. Any more questions, and then I'll open it up to public if they have any questions.
He's writing down the conditions already, or is he?
Trying to.
Excellent, excellent.
They're going to give you the request for waivers, they're going.
That'd be great. Yeah, what? You're not going to be in, you're going to be able to comply with most everything, so what we can do is, we can try to close the hearing, and.
Well, the only thing that I was going to do was keep it open because of the green cards, I mean, just so we can.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll come back, we'll sort of finish everything up.
And we'll have the approval.
The only, the only reason I'm going to do that is just in case somebody didn't get something, we can keep it open, okay?
No, that's good, forgot about the green cards.
Green card, um, I was just going to open up to public questions, does the public have any questions that they want, besides Dave? No, just kidding. Go ahead, Dave.
How long will the project take to build?
Um, the goal is to get it constructed by September eleventh.
Of this year?
Of this year, that was our deadline with D O E R for the ASRAC program that we're in, we did get an extension, so we might push that out, but I, I might try to hold the contractors to the original deadline, just to get it done before the winter.
Now, when the construction is going on, will, have there any, any traffic delays on one forty?
I don't, I don't anticipate it, because I could use Pierce Street and the substation as laydown areas and, and parking areas.
Because in the line, that's pretty heavily.
I definitely want to stay off one forty in the morning, so we'll probably utilize the, the Pierce Street and the.
Because train, the train does enough, you know, causes enough problems, so.
Yep, no, I agree, maybe we don't want to.
And as far as the bus turnaround, it's, it's going to stay the same.
Correct, those, that, we don't, we don't interfere with those dimensions.
Are they going to try to, like, level, because I know it's kind of.
I was thinking about paving it after we're done.
Oh, that'd be nice.
Just to.
I'm sure the bus, bus driver would be really appreciative of that.
It is, it is messy right now, so we figured we would be doing some cosmetic work just to clean it up.
Yeah, I mean, if you make the place, I mean, just while you're there, make it look presentable, that would be terrific, just.
Right, our sign will go on there, so we don't want.
It's going to be yours, yeah.
We don't want, we don't want to have a sign in front of the potholes.
Right.
No, that sounds good.
And the commissioners are here, by the way, too, the light department.
Excellent.
Two commissioners, one in Denne here, so if you have any questions with the commissioners, commissioners are generally.
They have any problems with this?
Right, they're the elected folks that manage the, the light department as far as the town goes, and, and so if there are any questions, the board, they're here too, so.
Do you have anything?
I do have one other question, how much electricity will be getting through this, and is this excess for the town?
The last question part, is this.
Is this excess, more electricity will be there?
No, for the second question, no, we, we never buy more power than we need, we'd always buy, we always commit to slightly less, because we never want to over commit to generation and then say, have to sell it to the market, because then you, you could consider us being kind of like a power market, we never want to be in that business, we only want to buy enough energy for the community that we serve, so we tend to try to meet an eighty percent of our, our power needs by either building plants or buying power. This particular plant, from the two bids that we got, it's approximately two megawatts, it's about two thousand five hundred thousand kilowatt hours a year, and that represents about four to five percent of our energy needs as a town in a given year.
Okay, and the other one is?
About one percent.
Okay, go ahead.
The savings that we gain, when we get our power brought to the town, we do not own transmission lines, so every kilowatt hour, or every kilowatt that comes into the town, national grid is charging us a cent and a half, by having solar, it goes direct into our system, there's no transmission cost, so it's a great savings.
And the power is free?
Pardon?
And the power is free, I mean, except for the construction.
As long as the sun is shining, we're making power.
Definitely we'll be getting less in the winter times, right?
Correct, yes, and what, what I was saying is, basically, if we, anytime we self-generate within our boundary, our main meter, the one meter that measures every kilowatt hour in the entire community of West Wilson, is right behind it in the substation, so by generating behind that meter, and that's where the phrase "behind the meter" comes from, that meter goes down by the corresponding generation. So the world sees us as a smaller unit, and therefore I get a smaller bill, that's part of the revenue stream that we see that keeps our rates low.
Yeah, okay.
And it does cost us something to build this, so it's not free, but.
At some point, it's a benefit.
If we, if we finance it, or build it, or use, or even our own capital, we probably have a payback in the, in the ten to fifteen year, it's a pretty good payback.
Yeah.
And actually, the cash flow is positive even year one, with the sale of the environmental systems that we'll sell, so.
Excellent.
So it gives you, you get a small, but we get a small.
Yeah, correct, and, and our, your bill hasn't, we haven't touched our electric bills in, since two thousand nine, so we've been being pretty good about trying to manage our power supply, and this is just one piece of it, but.
We need to do it, go ahead.
And another point too, is that with Vermont Yankee, that's closed, Plymouth is going to close, there's not any new generation being constructed in Massachusetts, so it's possible at our, two meetings ago, we talked about the power cost could double very shortly, so that's why we're, we're trying to get as much solar, as much hydro, whatever we can, without paying transmission, and our, our hydro has been in Olddale, that horseshoe falls that we see there, we're trying to get that back, but it, to have business here, to have an industrial park, we've, we're offering low power, and John has got us to the point where I think we're fifth lowest in central ends, so we're getting pretty proud of that.
You won't be considering any windmills, right?
We own, we own a windmill in, apart from, part owners of the Brody Mountain Hancock, uh, not Hancock, what do we call it, Berkshire Wind, so fourteen municipal light plants got together and built ten turbines out in Brody Mountain, we, we're a part owner of that, we buy a small portion of the Princeton Wind, and we buy Hancock Wind in Maine, which is a brand new wind farm, it's under construction, but we have a fixed contract for twenty years for the energy there, so we know our prices every hour for the hour for the next twenty years, so we, we, we mix up our resources as best as possible between solar, wind, hydro, nuclear, natural gas, oil, and oil's being phased out in our state, so it's, that's good because it's a little bit dirtier, but we have to have a little bit of everything.
Yeah, good, good, all right, everybody happy?
When's the next meeting?
Twenty-seven.
Okay, we're going to continue the public hearing. Oh, you have to make a motion.
Yeah, okay, a motion to continue the public hearing until, where are we, April twenty, twenty-seventh, do we have anything on at seven?
We're on at seven, so we'll put it back on.
Sounds good, at seven o'clock on the twenty-seventh.
And just bring those green cards in, and we'll, you know, any, any issues with the.
And just have the drainage, send the drainage stuff in.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And do you have any more concerns or anything you want from us, or?
No, you, you know, we need to go for the, the DEP.
Yes, I know, yeah, yes.
And what we'll do is, we're going to try to draft an approval letter with conditions and send it to them for review before that.
So if you could, if you could send us the request for waivers, we'll try to get that in the letter.
Okay.
You have all your, your last five.
Yes.
And we'll just get it to them, you can review it, make comments, and then that will be done.
Okay, okay.
Okay, is there a second? Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to take these? Just so you're happy with them?
You have what?
You can have everything from the.
Wow.
These are two of the same things, so we don't.
Everyone likes the.
May need in the future, but.
Yeah, yeah.
It could be deleted after it's closed.
It's good, it's great, yeah.
The entire column. Just the yellow one, this one.
No, thank you.
I promised to bring it back.
Only condition, we are not getting any lesser bill.
Okay.
No use.
Do you have an hour for that?
Oh wait.
Fifteen minutes to kill.
We can do the ninety-nine.
Five minutes, five minutes, I don't know, I would have been like on no one.
We want to do the ninety-nine Hartwell, we'll get that out of the way. What is this one?
Out of order, we don't have to, uh.
Here's the drawings to go with that.
Thank you.
Uh, I was going to skip to the ninety-nine Hartwell, so we can get them out in our fifteen minutes before the.
Absolutely, oh, did I, I did a draft, right? I never updated it, I sent the draft of stormwater permit out, you guys got that, right?
Yeah, they got it, and reviewed, okay, come on, we'll, we'll do you, if you don't mind going early, okay. I mean, we can wait.
I get the waiver process.
You can even have some chips.
Oh boy, thank you.
Um, Mr. Chibwood, from the board, March.
Yep.
We were talking about the stormwater chambers, underground chambers.
Yep.
Among our discussion, we came to, I guess I'd say consensus, that if we were able to make the floors of the chambers impervious by adding flowable fill, controlled density fill, it would be suitable for board, we had kind of general consensus.
There was, in, in VHB, that was their, that whole suggestion.
Yeah, so we, we did communicate that with VHB, we made a couple of, we had a couple of interaction with them, and they concur, so on April first, Rob went ahead and put flowable fill in the bottom of the chambers, Chris Keen of my office, they have VHB, had an inspector there, we found a pretty satisfactory operation.
And you added some, you added some storm scepters and some more area?
Well, what happened was, Rob has worked with this stuff before, and he was concerned about making sure we could get it to all corners of the chambers, so he cut openings in some of the chambers, at one point we had talked about putting like a concrete cap over that afterwards, and then Rob came up with what I think is a much better idea, buy chambers and cut the sections out that go right over the opening.
And just put an over line.
Yeah, so it's a structurally identical piece over the top, much better solution, worked out, so.
Three, you, any questions about that, or, I understand what you're thinking.
I think it was a hole.
Was it twelve inch square or something?
Yeah, twelve by twelve.
I think it was a patch.
Patch over the, over that side.
By, I mean, was it, was it twelve, was it thirteen inches, or was it like two feet?
Did it go down to about halfway?
There was a few inches on either side to cover the hole, and then we put fabric over A few inches on either side to cover the hole, and then we put uh fabric over that. And then we backfill it. So that actually, it it forms the same shape as what was originally there, which.
And it can't slide, I mean, the fabric is kind of.
No, and the stone, we put all stone back in, so it locks it right in.
Yeah, I think, what's his name?
There's some pictures.
He said it looked good.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I think I I would propose that or suggest the board can make a finding that the system is designed and has been built substantially in accordance with the uh the Stormwater Management Standards and the and the bylaw itself.
Yes, and I don't have the permit, because Chris gave us some comments on it to change, we have plans and stuff. Didn't bring anything, so. But I think, I mean, the idea is good, I think we're moving along, and.
Yeah.
How much more work do you have to be done and come back to us for the as-built stuff?
The only thing left is the. The only thing left is the whole system's in in the back, that's completed, um that's ready for pavement, final grading and pavement, and then we we're starting tomorrow up front by the road. That's the storm scepter, that that small section there, that's.
Building looks terrific, man, I can't see the building, looks great. Yeah. All the work on the building is done, or?
Just about, on the inside, where up to down to paint and flooring right now, so.
Alright, so the project's in general moving on?
May first, hopefully we can.
You think you're in your days, I mean, we were, everybody's been moving.
I think we're gonna make it as long as the paving plans open up. And um we can get that thing paved, you know.
This week's supposed to be good.
Yeah, we just. Some decent water change.
Then there. Yeah, we have some bills for the VHB review, so for all the, you know, their time, they've they've billed us. Bill us, and you know about all the, they've copied you and all the others.
We paid one this morning, was like five eighty-four or something like that.
Five.
Five twenty-four?
About twenty-four.
But I gave a copy of the outstanding bills. Yeah.
Yeah, there's bills I didn't receive, so.
It looks like it, there's a, January is twenty-three hundred, March is thirteen hundred, twenty-four hundred, anticipated break of April. That's what that's what we have from VHP.
What's the, what's the grand total?
Seventy-five, seventy-five fifty-eight oh three, but that's with that estimate for April.
That, but I've already, some of that is paid by the check I've heard.
The five fifty-four, five twenty-four?
That was February versus, there was January, March, April, no more now.
So what about the money I've.
The initial money?
Give them my invoice.
Did we already spend the initial?
I think that was spent, because we we didn't take anything in.
It was sixty, initially, it was like sixteen dollars left in the account, from the original money.
From the original review.
How much money did I um have to pay initially for the application and all that?
The application, yours, you during the review process, you used up everything but I think it was sixteen dollars worth, and now.
But that started up, but that starts out at like twenty-five hundred, is that the initial?
Right, something like that.
I think you pay twenty-five hundred when you.
So it's seventy-five hundred dollars more, is what you just said.
Yes.
That's, this is her summary.
And those are the bills.
Do you want to say?
And so what we're gonna do, we'll have the approval, we can draft it and get that ready, and then when we get the payment, we'll release the approval.
Okay.
And part of that is, you know, VHB was just working, you know, back and forth, back and forth, and I mean, and they, it's just their time, you know, they, that's what they do.
Anytime you talk to them, you get charged.
Yeah, no, it's uh.
I know.
It is what it is.
So what were you gonna say, you you wanna get the letter, we'll get everything straight?
Well, I have to go through and update the letter, you have the plans?
I do, I do. There's there's four sets here, do you want these now? Can I give these to you now? That's the four sets of prints now that are updated. We have the reproducible, if you want that as well, I don't know if you.
No, well, actually, we got.
Did we already sign one? We signed the original, now we gotta change it?
Right, there are changes, but.
Okay. Want to wait till next week and then and do it all at once, or?
They're already, it's almost done, so I don't know the need to go through and do that, because normally we sign it and have you send us copies of the signed plans, but we've got these, we're pretty much along the way, why don't we just wait for the as-bills?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do, that makes sense, okay.
Okay. You agree, I mean, that's that's alright with your schedule?
What's that?
You're you're good with that?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, yeah.
And so when we're meeting on the twenty-seventh, um you're hoping to have it paved by that time, too?
Twenty-seventh, though.
Two weeks from now.
Two weeks from now?
Before May.
I'm hoping to have it paved by that, yes.
So we'll have that letter, because we don't have another meeting before then, I mean, but we can let the uh the building inspector know, you can email the building inspector, let him know we approved the stormwater.
Oh, okay.
Kind of waiting, because.
Oh, was he?
Well, he's new.
Are you having trouble getting something through the building inspector right now?
No, he said he just, he knows this is outstanding, he wants to have his file complete before he signs off any certificate of occupancy, so he's waiting for us to do a certificate of completion, that we're happy with everything.
And for right now, we'll just say we approve the.
Right now, yeah, right, so far, so good, is where we're at.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns you wanna bring up?
So um do we want to, actually.
We're not continuing here, I think we're just gonna meet again.
We'll review it at our next meeting, we'll review the actual permit.
Okay.
And Chris made his comments, so I think we're all set, I didn't see anything big when I just glanced through it, so.
On the review of the letter?
Yes.
Alright, okay, very good, thank you. Do you do you need those, or do you also?
No, I'll just pop it.
I gotta say something, I can't bite my tongue on that, but it's just. Is, it took one engineer to design the system and come out and do the inspection, and it took. Two senior engineers, project and two project engineers and a principal.
To review it.
To review it. And so it's over ten thousand dollars for the towns engineer to, that's a big hit, you know, that's.
Well, but you know, it went around and around and around a bunch of times.
We ran into this problem.
I know, I mean, I know it was gonna, yeah, you know, I just, alright, is this common, is this usually what it is?
No, no, that's, you, that's, we we actually calculate the fee based on a review and then a follow-up review of, you you address all their issues.
Can VHB do a project for me in West Boston, or because they're?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have.
They're doing, no, they're not doing.
No, they did CDS.
But you have to have a different.
We have a.
You can have another reviewer.
So you still have to.
We'd hire Quinn then.
Alright, guys, thank you.
Good night.
That's a lot of money.
I think, I mean, I would say it's common when they when they keep iterating like this.
But they went around, it was basically six, seven reviews, and they got called in, they told them what he wanted, and they came up with some other alternative that they wanted to submit for him to review, and it wasn't adequate.
VHP reviewed three times, different things that weren't gonna work.
Yeah, I think it was six times, because I was ready for, actually, they did seven reviews, and I think they've done four inspections.
It's the Quinn stuff.
So it's the whole thing, it's not just engineering review, it's construction supervision, and they're the ones that caught the problems. They. Yeah, the holes that he cut in the structures, he was ready to just put a couple of rebars across the top and then fill over it, and then they're gonna be driving these team wheelers on top of it, so it would have collapsed, so. He's actually saving money by having VHB have done the review and say, okay, you need to really protect this, but.
But he gave credit to Rob. He gave credit to. Green cards.
For whom?
For the solar, oh, I just did green cards.
Sorry, he's local, we'll talk to him.
These are these are light plants.
Marco sent an email, that'll be his penance.
Wait, give me the note then.
Make sure, write yourself another note, Melanie, so just in case.
Just in case I forget. Are you writing a note? Because my email on my phone isn't working.
I got messages from you today, so I was gonna say.
Are you both here for the signed one? Sure, are you here for the signed bylaw?
I'm here for the, I didn't understand, I'm Dr. Jackson, I came here for the eight-thirty.
Right, yep, it's eight o'clock, we can't open that hearing until eight-thirty. Actually, it's not a public hearing, so we could do that whenever the applicant.
Yeah, I'd like to present something a little.
Well, we have to wait for the applicant and everyone to show, it's it's not a public hearing, it's a, it's just a meeting to review the plan they have as a proposal.
Can I just present something to the board as far as a document?
Let's wait for them to get here, so we're presenting to everybody.
Alright.
And 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 I also have to stay on Main Gator Park.
I'm not gonna talk, I cannot, I understand you can't speak, right?
Right.
Right.
So can I at least give you something?
Yeah, do you wanna give it to us and and leave, or do you wanna stay for the meeting, Bert?
I'd like to give it to you now, if you don't mind.
We can drop it on.
Sure, we can take, we can take it, yep.
We can take it, and then at eight eight-thirty, we'll review.
It doesn't have to be involved with a hearing, but that's a very complicated situation there at that hearing. I'd like to give to the planning board a letter that I sent to the chief of police, and have that on record. And then I'd also like to give uh something on the water quality that I've checked into contamination of the water, so I'd like to have you have that into your record. Okay, is there anything I can do with the hearing, or just have to listen?
You just have to listen, it's not a public hearing, it's a presentation by their engineer.
Okay.
Because it's preliminary, there's no.
Right, this is a preliminary subdivision, so there's no public hearing.
When did, when did the public hearing come up?
Definitive subdivision, so when they do the next step.
When it matures to a real project.
Right.
Probably in six months, four to six months.
This is a very, very complicated situation, so I hope you read that correspondence, it's legal issues here involved, too, so the planning board should be aware of it.
Okay.
And I and I look forward to being able to uh speak, but if you're just gonna get the information, there's nothing I can do.
Right now, for this preliminary.
For this part, yeah.
Right.
Because right now, we get the public hearing for.
Yeah, I just said the eight o'clock schedule, and then we'll come back to, come back to this at eight-thirty.
I may just stay and listen, but.
What do you think of the sign in the middle of town?
Pardon?
What do you think of the sign in the middle of town, that's what we're gonna move on to?
Oh, I'm not, what sign?
The 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 lit up sign right in front of the church, you know, with the, you see when you're sitting at the stoplight?
I'm not involved in that one.
He doesn't care.
But it isn't that I don't care.
He doesn't drive that way.
I just want this planning board fully understand, and I hope you read that, because this is a serious legal issue here. Vinny, you know what I'm involved with in that whole town, and I'm getting involved with the DCR, too.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay.
What did you do?
I, nothing yet, alright, we just have to make sure that it applies to the property at the eleven acres.
Yeah, that'll that'll have application to the property, and I think all planning board members should be aware of that.
Do you wanna read it?
Alright, yeah, we gotta do the sign by law.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Are you here for the sign review, sign by law review? We have no public.
What excitement do we have for that?
You're always here, you're always here.
What do you have to say about this, well?
Read that. Don't take away my. That's right.
Pursuant to M Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, the West Boylston Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, at eight o'clock PM. In the first floor meeting room, West Boylston Town Hall, one forty Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass, to consider amending West Boylston zoning bylaw, signs and billboards, Section five point six, as follows. Revised Section five point six E two, business centers, standing sign requirements for retail, business centers, or office, industrial, technical parks. Two, revised Section five point six C two, sign schedule, dimensional requirements for business center standing signs. Three, revised Section five point six D three one E I, decrease or remove the minimum duration requirement for digital display signs. Four, revise other sections of Section five point six to allow standing signs for business centers to be located within ten feet of the property line. And five, revised Section five point six D three one E, add standards associated with digital display sites. The complete text of the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is available at the town clerk's office for public inspection during regular business hours. Awesome, there's nobody here to talk about it, so you wanna just do it? I'm sorry, Dave, you can talk about it.
Okay, one, the letter, it, all the red cross-stone stuff is the stuff that's gonna be taken out of the existing bylaw, is that correct?
Strike out.
Proposed to be removed, yeah.
Okay, alright. Just out of curiosity, when you get down to um the digital display signs not permitted within any, within any residential district? So. If a business moves into a residential district, or if somebody goes to the ZBA looking for a special permit to put a business in a residential district, okay, they would not be allowed to use a digital sign, is that correct? I mean, under what.
Unless they go get a variance from the ZBA, which would be a tough variance to, I mean, something associated with.
Hardship for the digital sign.
Yeah, hardship for a digital sign versus a regular sign doesn't, it would be difficult, so probably they would not.
But yes, that that's what would be covered by that.
The reason I'm asking you all this is because I had gone to that CPTC training in um in March, and um one of the things, one of the lectures that I attended had to do with sign bylaws. And um there was quite a few, it was very interesting, and you know, listening to government people talk about, you know, sign bylaws within their towns and stuff like that, but there's a lot of good information that came out of it, and um some of it, you know. Is not within what the town does, in other words, the state is saying something, one thing, and we're doing something different, you know, as far as some of the, some of the signs that can be, you know.
They're allowed.
Allowed and stuff like that.
Do you have examples of that?
Are we more restrictive?
Well, it just seemed like they they're saying that some of, some signs are allowed in the residential district, whereas others aren't, you know.
You have a variety of towns.
Like in the town, like in the town, as far as like political signs, okay, they have to go up thirty days.
And then come back.
No sooner than thirty days prior, and they have to be taken down within thirty days of.
Right, Friday.
Okay.
Five days.
Couple of, well, they said thirty, I'm just saying, that's the town.
Our town bylaws.
Our bylaws.
That's what I'm saying, okay, but um. They talked about that the signs for like real estate, you know, property for sale and stuff, that's kind of a touchy subject, you know, as far as the signs and stuff, the way they were explaining it, it's, it's, you know.
We don't.
A lot of people were talking about, you know, the signs to stay up too long, you know, that they shouldn't be up there that long, it was, you know, it was.
Do you wanna change that in the sign by law?
If the property is sold, you know, the property, who bought it, so they are going to remove it, right?
Yeah, but what I'm saying is.
It just happened to me.
They're saying is, is that people put the sign up and it could sit there for six months.
If it is not sold.
And they're saying that it it should, you know, there's some restrictions.
As far as as our sign by law, do you wanna propose a change to it?
Oh, yeah, I know, as far as us, like as far as the business center, okay, how many business centers do we actually have in town, other than?
Like dozens, or dozen, a little more.
Well, no, because the business center has to have.
Two dozen, is it two dozen? We counted, I forget.
Businesses, right?
Two dozen of them.
Yeah.
Two dozen?
Yeah.
We have seventeen right along Route twelve alone.
Okay, but as far as the sign, the business center bylaw, it has to have what, three or more?
Three or more businesses, yeah, in one location, yeah.
Alright, and I know that there's a lot of restrictions, but. I think that when on a business center bylaw.
Sign by law.
I think that it all depends, in my opinion, it should depend on where the center is located. I mean, if it's in an area where the, when the traffic is coming, people need, you know, because it's so far away, like when you go up Route twelve, okay, there's a lot of business centers that are like boom, 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 like one after another. So you don't need the signs to be as big, but I think that in a business center where is really not much else.
Like these people, the ninety-nine Hartwell, that's a business center now, that's why they came in the first place.
Well, like where the Salter School is, okay, where Conlon Fountains is, now, I didn't, I wasn't really objecting to the, you know, to their sign, because, you know, coming off, coming up over the hill.
A huge sign.
Coming the other way, you know, you wanna be able to see it before it's too late, and I mean, it's wide open, and when you're talking about the business centers, like I think with Salter School and that that whole center, I think that has an exemption because it's so far.
Well, that's why they went to see you.
Right, regardless of that, you're talking about this, I'm talking about the sign by law.
Yes, he wants to change the sign by law, so we adjust things based on how far back the building is.
Oh, I would love to do that.
If it is a different.
That's the only one with that situation.
Right.
Because, I mean, if if this is Route twelve, and you guys were the center, and that's where you're right on top of the road, then yeah, I don't think the sign should.
Well, that, if you drive up Route twelve, that's how most of the business centers are.
But when you have businesses that are set so far back, you know, you want that sign on the edge of the road to be bigger, so that you can see exactly.
At checkerboard, they did that, at checkerboard, they asked for a sign for that, because they are now a business center also.
Who's that?
The checkerboard building right next door.
Okay.
Uh they asked for a sign for that back, what's it called, something obstacles?
The gym.
Oh, the gaming stuff.
They want their own sign up on the corner, I think is what they, was what we let them do.
Yeah, I think so, so we.
So they have, they're exactly what you said, but they have their own sign.
Right.
And then checkerboard has the sign on the front of the building, I mean.
Because right now, but right now, as far as checkerboards is concerned, they are not as far back as the rest of us.
Oh, well.
Because, I mean, even if you take the safety council, the safety council is on the back of the building, you know, on the backside, so they need, unless somebody knows that they're there, you know, say somebody's coming and gonna go there, they wanna make sure.
Yeah, okay, I I mean, I I understand the point, I don't know what you want us to do about the, in the sign by law, about it.
Well, I just think that, you know, what you're saying as far as, you know, making it, you know, I I think that it should be a little bit bigger.
Well, the trouble with that is there's only one property that you've mentioned that really meets that criteria, and we don't usually write bylaws for a single property. Is on, can can you think of another location that has that depth problem?
In this town, no.
I I would, I would argue that the checkerboard shows that we actually solved the problem, because in in conjunction with, well, in in the sign by law, we allow. Site plan review to sort of waive, what is it? Waive strict compliance, and we let them put another sign up, just so that, since that that business is actually around behind checkerboard, and they wanted.
But there's gonna be two businesses back there.
I don't think they do it.
Driving school and.
I think they they ask for no driving school.
Well, it's it's no more driving school, I think, but I think there's something else coming in.
No, it's kind of do that, driving, teaching, just classes.
Oh, just classes, okay, it's, they did something where they're not putting one of the doors in, I don't remember what.
Okay, and then as far as the. Okay, and then as far as the--
So I think we're handling it.
As far as--
I'm at that point, not changing anymore.
Okay, as far as the digital sign, I mean, like right now, the one that's in town--
Yep.
Okay. One of the questions that I ask is about the town, you know, the town puts up a sign, you know, are they basically committed to the bylaw?
You want to say yes.
And they said it basically depends upon the town, you know, how the--
Oh, and then you're in the class.
Yeah, in the class, and it is.
Depends on what the--
We could change this to say that, but we didn't want to do that.
No, but what I'm going to ask you is as far as the digital sign, okay? Like now, you go look at the digital sign, it is, there's different colors. Some, you know, some, what's your call it, descriptions, they have a different color. Like I know when they have the St. Patrick's Day thing, all those letters were in green, okay? The, I think the tax bills was in yellow.
Is there a problem with that, though?
No, I don't have a problem.
I think that's allowed in our bylaw.
Yeah, as long as it's text.
Yeah, I think you, I think you're allowed to do it as long as it's not multicolored.
It says, but no portion of the image can scroll, twirl, color change, imitate movement in any manner, twirl, uh, color change, so doesn't--
No, the color change, it comes up as green--
Like flashing color.
Or it comes up, right, so if it changed from blue to red to green, that kind of thing, or--
But you're talking about the sign when it comes--
Single color.
When the image comes up, it can't change.
Well, I missed, when they said color change, I was thinking that, you know, you didn't want, you know, a different, a different--
You don't want it to be that blasé.
Yeah, okay. And I don't have any problems with, you know, whatever time limit, it doesn't--
Or no time limit. Do you want, what's your comment on whether, if we were to put no time limit?
That's fine.
Oh, great.
I don't have a problem with that, you know? Because like right now, if you go to the red light and you sit there, it probably takes anywhere from ten to fifteen seconds.
At that time, yeah.
For something to change. The only thing I don't like about the sign is that it's not too late, two-faced. It's only one-faced.
Oh, that sign itself?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, we're not endorsing that sign or anything, but that's sort of our experimental sign. When they do things there, we hear about it.
Other than that, I didn't see any, see any other problems. I understand what Vinnie has always been saying about, you know, the setback as far as the sign and stuff, you know.
Oh, you mean the ten-foot part?
Yeah, the ten-foot part.
Do you like it or not like it?
No, that's fine. I don't, I think that it should be setback. I mean, and that's what, that's what, that's what they did over at the, over at the Southers School. He redid that, he put it forty feet, you know, forty feet from the road, which is--
Oh, well, what we're going to do is change it so that they could be assigned closer to the road.
Okay.
And do, I mean, do you have any comment about that?
I don't think it should be any closer to the road. I think it should be as far back as, as possible with-- when you, so that you'll be able to see it, you know, significantly, when you're coming either way, you know.
I think that the dilemma that kind of spurred that is that most signs are closer than ten feet. They're not where they're supposed to be.
But, and the other part is, is if we're going to have smaller signs, you bring them closer. We don't want to force or require small signs and then move them a hundred feet back in the property. So we want to have them up front, close, and then it's just a smaller sign, hopefully.
Readable, seeable.
People know that's the location where it is. Instead of trying to figure out, okay, that sign's back there, how do I get to that? And I know on Route nine for the target there, it took a couple of tries for me to get in the right driveway to get to the building that was way back, like you said. But their sign was way back at the time. So we want to try to keep it close to the road, so people know where to turn to get into the location they're trying to go to.
If you want to talk about Route nine, it's confusing there because they have a Wegman sign on Route nine, and there is no Wegmans.
No, but they just, they just show it so that people know--
I know, but I mean, that's horrible. You know, like, oh, that's where I'm trying to go, but it's not even here.
If you, just to shed some light on it, if you want to talk about that, go on to Route twenty, where that plaza, where Great Plaza is. They're building restaurants right on Route twenty. That sign, you think the one at, at us, at our business center, that's twice the size.
Oh, yeah, but that says whose would it be?
No, I, I'm just, I'm just--
Everything is huge, twice, so it's a max.
And I don't, and I don't agree with this.
We want to keep West Boylston a small-town feeling, right?
Size size.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think they should be like, I think you should be able, they should come to you and say, this is what we want to do, as long as it's going to fit, you know, businesses--
Well, but they won't come to us. They'll come to the building inspector, and he needs some guidance, so that you can--
No, in a site plan, they still, we come--
No, site plan, they come to us.
But then we get the same thing that we got with Cumberland Farms. They come in and say, well, we want this big sign, and we say, well, that's three times bigger than what our bylaw requires. And they say, well, that's kind of similar to what's in the area. And then they say, well, you got a billboard here and a billboard there, which I don't think anyone in town really likes the billboards, but they've existed and we have no way of not having them. So that they, they compare to the billboards, so they put their big giant sign up. Now, the next guy that comes in is going to say, well, we got a billboard, a billboard, and the Cumberland Farms, so we have to have a big sign. And then it's just gonna--
And the huge sign that the C. B. A. allowed.
That's right, it's, yeah, all those signs.
But didn't, but when Cumberland Farms came in and they were asking for the size of the sign, okay, I believe that what they were, they were just asking for the size that the signs that they have at their other locations are, okay? I don't think--
They didn't use their Northborough location. They didn't use the size of the sign at the Northborough location. They picked the size of the sign they wanted to have on that site.
Oh, yes.
And then they said, okay, well, that's like our Lemonster sign or our--
But that's going back to what I, what I said as far as, you know, where, where the business is located. If it's nothing really significant around it, okay, if you go to the one in Northborough, it's like right there in--
Do you think that if there's nothing around, should it be a bigger sign? Or if there's nothing around, should it be a smaller sign?
Yeah, but business--
Because when you're coming to it, you want to be able to see it. You don't want to have to just get right on top of it and then miss it and maybe cause an accident. You know, fortunately, the one where the plaza is now in West Boylston, there's a light there, okay? But still, when you're coming up the hill, you know, you want to be able to see the signs to see what businesses are in that thing. If that's where you're going, especially if you don't live in the town, you know.
I could say one thing, you know, in the Dunkin' Donuts Plaza--
Yeah.
All those signs are very small on the wall. So he's here, and he's--
That sign's useless.
Oh, you turned four?
Yeah.
Oh, all right.
So that's a very small sign. His business needs an exposure. So what's wrong in giving a bigger sign?
Yeah, that sign, the sign for--
For the plaza.
Smaller, yeah, the Plaza sign is great for Dunkin's because they have a big sign. But all the other signs, like for us, it's useless, so we see--
Actually, that's changing in this one.
Yeah.
In this copy.
So the signs, you're going to be able to put a bigger sign?
They could, but I don't know if they--
But it's, it's still up to the owner. The owner has a requirement on the size. So the overall size is going to be limited. How the owner of the business center divides that up, that's usually the problem. Because he'll say, okay, well, Dunkin' Donuts is my anchor, or whatever you want to call it. They get a huge part, and then everybody else gets a line. But that's not our, that's not the planning board's position. We just try to limit the size of the signs and then let them apply it the way they're getting rent.
But the thing is, though, if you put, if you're making a restriction on the size of the individual sign--
We're not.
Okay, you're not doing that.
Well, we, I think there's a minimum.
It's for a business center, right?
For a business center.
No, no, I'm talking about--
We change it to be--
I'm talking about an individual business. You're saying that the sign can only be so big for an individual--
Oh, in any event, yes. There's a limit on sign size.
All right, what I'm saying, though, is if he needs a little bit bigger, then however many signs are going to be in that, you take that size, whatever you're going to be, however many businesses, and then you make the whole--
We don't even say that it has to be even, like the fact that Dunkin' Donuts is a bigger sign. If he can convince them that he gets the Dunkin' Donuts size sign, you have a Dunkin' Donuts size sign. But it all has to fit on that-- Was it a hundred square feet?
The whole thing not to exceed a hundred square--
I think it's a hundred square feet for the whole sign, and whatever you want to do in there. You know, you can do whatever you want to do.
And also, maybe Dunkin' Donuts--
A hundred square feet is the change. It used to be eighty?
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, so is my interest. So change it to a hundred and twenty square feet.
Why?
Well, we're only, he gets business now anyways, what the heck? It's only going to get better if it gets a little bit bigger or huge. Are you moving down the street, though?
I'm moving bigger, so I'm getting more business.
Yeah, there you go. And you have your sign on your store, too. That's actually the benefit of the, the business centers that are on the street. You can have a sign on your storefront, you know, and--
We'll have, at our location at the two fifteen, we'll have the advantage, in my opinion, versus the C. M. T. in the back. Because he just has a sign out front right now--
Yes.
With a bigger sign. We'll have a smaller sign there, is what we're going to plan for.
But you have the storefront.
And then have a sign on the building, so. But the square footage thing brings up my question of actually what I'm hearing. Hundred square feet, is that one sign or combined signage? So say, for example, I want one on the street and I want one on the building. Am I allowed a hundred square feet total, or am I allowed like twenty?
A hundred square feet is the business center standing sign--
Okay.
Out front.
So outside.
And you, no-- No, that one sign, that sign.
That's one out front. That's the standing sign out front. You're also allowed, I think, thirty square feet on the building itself.
On the building.
So you get both.
And nothing in the window.
And up to twenty-five percent of the window area, I think is what it is. I don't have that one memorized, but I'm pretty sure it's--
And then you have little entrance signs and things like that. We change it so your entrance sign can have some little info on it, too.
Yeah, like phone number, hours, and that kind of stuff, or?
Oh, I was thinking like, enter here sign, could be an enter here, like Cumberland Farms has their logo on half the sign, or three, two-thirds of the sign, you know.
Does that come into play, too, the, like, the signage on the front door? This is all going to be new to me.
Yes.
In that new building.
You get twenty-five percent of your window area--
Yeah, I don't know what your door--
Do you have that?
Yeah, it says right, total square foot. Currently, it says not to exceed ten percent of the wall area to which it is affixed. You have a big wall.
Right, but then there's windows, I think. Window displays or something like that.
Uh, where is that? Look, we just write these things. You're going to have to--
It can't be, it can't be a neon sign, it has--
Oh, yeah, and, and you can have digital signs. No, well--
You can have digital--
You can have a digital sign, but not a neon.
Yep, you're right, you're right. Window signs, signs and windows within non-residential districts--
What'd you say?
Subject to these conditions. Window signs shall not be animated or lighted, occupy more than twenty-five percent of the window area, or displayed in windows above the ground floor level.
Now, does it include signs like open signs?
No.
No, uh--
An open sign that's going to hang in the window?
You can have an open, no, that's an open sign with a clock when you're going to be back. That kind of stuff, that's just operations.
Lit up.
Not neon.
Not neon.
Well--
In other words, when you turn it on, it says open--
Yeah.
Bright, you know, when you shut it off, it says, it says closed. You're not supposed to have one of those, right?
I'm pretty sure that it's no neon.
There's no neon. Like, you can have signs that--
Now, you drive by a business and they have closed, and it's like lit up for the hostess, okay?
Yeah, but--
But you can't have--
Yeah, but if, if that is the case, you know, the lottery signs are there, flower ball.
Not according to what you just read.
No, what I only read was the twenty-five percent of the window.
Window, so there's a special consideration section. One sign denoting open, closed, be back, et cetera, shall be allowed if less than one square foot in size and shall not be counted against the allowable twenty-five percent.
So it can be lit?
These signs may be lighted, but not flashing.
According to, according to that.
And that doesn't count as anything, you just have an open sign.
That's okay.
Can we have people sign in, just so we can get names of who's here, and so our clerk can say who's speaking? One with signs.
Turn four hobbies.
Good place.
Doesn't seem like you guys changed a lot.
No, not much. The biggest thing was the--
I mean, you know--
Removing some contradictions in that sign that we're just talking about.
Right.
And then the zero timing of the, of the digital signs.
And setback, if we do that. We still haven't gone through and looked at all the places where it says ten feet, so. Might be daunting.
And this is something that, once you, this, when you get the finalized, this will be something that'll be at town meeting, so people can pick it up in the meeting.
Oh, sure.
It will be, yes, once we close the hearing, we'll then compile--
We'll make it accurate.
Right.
What we, what, if everyone says no, we don't want to do it, then we will draft, we will draft the article language that'll say exactly what it has changed.
Melanie says yes, she might get one copy. No, just what we end up, the final--
If you go to town meeting, right, if there's something--
Almost eight-thirty.
They have, they'll have copies over there made up, so people can take it and read it before it gets to the article, so they can understand what's going on.
Right, yeah, we plan on having it two weeks in advance.
They always have a thing over there, a copy of the budget, so people can look at--
And no recycle bin. And no recycle bin. Does anybody else have any sign bylaw comments?
Suggestions?
Suggestions, corrections, improvements?
Can I do the suggestions, too?
Your comments, right?
We've already done it, but we'll take them, I guess.
What do you want to say?
Uh, the thing is, you know, the zero seconds, that's the thing that bothers me.
It may shoot the whole thing down. The town may just say, I don't like that, at town meeting, and everything goes. That's the way we're playing it, I guess.
Yeah. I think, you know, I'm not, I'm against them, that zero seconds.
What would you be potentially in favor of?
We did talk about fifteen seconds.
Ten or fifteen seconds.
There should be some limit. There should be some limit.
What do you think?
No.
You're our public.
Because, because, I don't think so, because if you're waiting at that red light, you want to be able to see it, you know, you might miss something.
Yeah, but it, it will look like a Las Vegas, right?
Like election, you might miss the election, you might miss, you know, whatever, tax bills or something.
What do you think about the, the sign in the town that, that flashes? I think it's, it's certainly not at a minute right now, but it, it changes its sign every 10 seconds, 15 seconds.
No, in the school, you know, they have that sign. The snowflakes coming down.
Well, that's not a good sign.
Sign goes quick.
So the school is how long it stays on the intersection before it goes?
Yeah, until it switches to the next news or topic.
It's kind of a tough one, because really, you shouldn't be paying attention to the sign when you're sitting there at the light. I don't know how many times I sit there, the light turns green, my wife is like, hello, here, let's go.
Yeah, you should be looking at the sign.
Should really pay attention to the sign. So, I mean, you're never gonna see it all.
Yeah, right.
You'll, because.
Unless they delay, now you won't be seeing anything.
If they delay too long, you know, I'm, I'm trying to think of how many cycles I, I probably only see maybe two things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
While I'm at that light.
It's not usually a lot more than that, I don't think, but.
Yeah.
I mean, it comes around to the temperature, the time.
Depends on what's on it, really.
Right, when it starts coming up, it's all what's happening, just park everybody on the parking lot, wait for.
And keep an eye on the sign for a little while.
We got good eyes, man.
If we're not supposed to be reading the sign when you're waiting at the light, then.
Well, no, he's just saying he gets in trouble with his wife when he says that.
I do the same thing, you know, but what I'm saying though is, is when you stop at the light, you look at the sign to see what's going on. I mean, if you don't know what's going on, then get rid of the sign. The, the sign doesn't serve any purpose.
Oh, if you're not supposed to read it.
Yeah, I mean, when you stop at a red light, you know, yeah, okay, you should be paying attention to the light, but when that sign is there and it's talk, telling you about different things in the town, you know, you should be able to, you know, to read it. And, yeah, okay, so, you know, white turns green, the guy behind you too.
So, do you have to, do you have to know all the things, what's happening on in the town?
It's nice to know, it's nice to know some of the things that are going on.
Well, that's why, you know, 15 seconds, change just 15 seconds.
It's nice to know who the tax bills are due, you know, it's nice to know that, you know, there's a play going on.
Either you can go on the town, town website, or call the assistant office. You will know it.
Well, then, then you know what? Then, then, then.
Well, my question, my question was more about the timing of the sign.
Timing of the sign.
Not the application of that sign at that intersection. And you, I mean, does he think it?
But that, that goes into the time.
The, the, the timing to, to give the sign operator the opportunity to set, set whatever time, because maybe he has a message that just says hello, in which case people will see that and they don't need 15 seconds to pick that message up. But the next message is, tax bills are due like this and that, and the other thing, it's something else, and there's a meeting, and there's something. If they have that one fired through at five seconds, you're not gonna get the whole thing. I mean, is it the right thing to do to give the person who's putting the sign, whatever, text together, the right to do whatever they want with that timing? Isn't that the right way to go, or should we give them a minimum, a 15 second minimum or something?
How long is the set for now?
I'm not sure on that sign.
It's 15 seconds.
Uh, I think it's like five or seven, is what Cheryl said. Five or seven is the typical one. Currently, our bylaw is saying a minute, but that was our first draft at the bylaw, and we want to put something in there.
And so it's currently not.
Should be one minute, but it's not.
Yeah.
It's changing.
And that's too much.
But a minute would be like, you're never gonna, you're gonna see that one thing and not know anything else, you know? So, I, I guess the, the, the whole issue is, make it zero in the bylaw and the people get to, whoever's setting up the sign, get to choose their timing.
Up to a minute.
Up to anything, they could have it stay the same, it doesn't even matter.
I got you. Yeah.
But again, the people who are putting it on want people to read this, I assume, so they're gonna leave enough time.
Right, they're gonna make it work. I mean, they're not gonna make it hard to get the message, because then it's not in their interest.
I mean, I suppose if it was me from a business point of view, that if I was advertising on that sign that Turn Four Hobbies is moving and changing its name to Turn Four Hobbies now, I would probably want it to sit there for a minute. Because it's my, it's my thing, so I mean, from that.
Well, even, even if you were paying to advertise, I mean, then you could go to them and say, I want it on longer, I mean, then it's.
But, I mean, as far as the way that it is now, I don't see.
Well, I guess the point there is that you should, we should give them the chance to advertise per their own reason to set the time, not per the bylaw. Like, you don't want it to be 15 seconds and then you pay them whatever they want, and they say, no, I have to be 15 seconds. You say, no, I want it longer, and they say, I can't. Rather than they say, I can.
When Cheryl was doing her, you know, checking all the signs, what did she say about, I can't remember what she said about.
Holden is like 10, 10, 15 seconds.
Yeah, they're in that range, I think.
But there's runs, I mean, it doesn't, I mean, they have a, one that runs, that scrolls.
Right.
But, my, you know, if I remember correctly, you know, she said 10, 10 to 15 seconds.
Yeah.
Delight, city lot of, lot of towns.
And when we talked to some other business owners and folks in town, 10 seemed to be a agreeable one. They can always make it, they could make it two minutes. That, we're not worried about, it's the, it's the frequency that.
Faster ones that we don't want to do.
We know more than, or know faster than 10 seconds.
The board of selectmen want to make it zero so that the sign operator has the freedom to do whatever they want.
Then maybe you should, maybe you should just leave it like that. And let the town people, when you go to town meeting, the town people deciding what they want.
If they want to amend it on the floor, they can do that.
Because I, I'm gonna draft them. Because the town meetings that I've been to, that, that's probably what's gonna happen, it's probably gonna get amended on town floor.
Wait, what do, how's it written right now, is it wrong?
Right now, the full.
It says not.
Non-limit.
Yeah.
Full digital image may change.
But no portion may, yeah, so it has no limit.
No limit, no.
It still has the, the language in there, you know, no portion may scroll.
Add a time.
Or twirl.
So if we had a draft amendment, just that people could use.
We have the public hearing here to work what we want, and then we can always, there's always gonna be what if stuff. If we want to be ready for it, we can be prepared.
Yeah, that's what I mean, be prepared. Any more comment or concerns?
Any other parts of the sign bylaws that people don't like or don't make sense?
Yeah, I mean, in addition to what we're changing, if there's something else you want to talk about.
Not, not what today.
Well, the other thing I'd mention, see if anybody has comments on this, is, just to make it clear, so this part of the bylaw where we're talking about the duration of a digital sign, this is not just applicable to, to the sign that's currently at the center of town, but it would be applicable to anybody, any other business, for example, who chooses to erect such a digital sign. They would be held to the same standard. Um, does that sort of cause any concerns to anybody? Do you, um, I don't know if there's any comments there, or?
So would that be something that, when you, when you make the final copy, that that would be specifically meant, that it's not just, you know, it would be all digital signs within the town of Westland?
Well, the bylaw, always.
Bylaw says that, law makes. The bylaw says that, so.
I mean, is that a concern of yours?
No. When you get the new sign at the new location.
At the new location, that's.
That'll be okay.
100 square feet of scrolling.
No scrolling.
If I could afford a digital sign, I'd probably put one up.
I'm just trying to think, if they were saying Route 12, if there were half a dozen businesses that paid for and erected these signs, and this proposed amendment goes through saying there's essentially no limit to how quickly you can change the sign. You potentially have several signs on Route 12 that will change, you know, I mean, it still can't be flashing signs, but they can change maybe more quickly than, than what some people might like. Would that adversely impact the sort of, the atmosphere or the, the feel of, of Route 12 in, in a way that the townspeople might not find appropriate? I think that, that's sort of what we're trying to get at.
Like the obstacle place across the street from where we're gonna be, if they get one going up with crazy signage and then say, you know, finders and keepers does something like that too, I mean, I'd get this into the.
Right.
You get into like the expression I've heard before, like the Las Vegas.
The Vegas strip right there on Route 12.
Exactly.
Crazy signage going like mad, which could be, yeah.
I mean.
It would take away from that small town, that type of feel that, that we have.
Exactly, I mean, we do still have some language which I think limits that.
Yeah. Do we, we let that in?
It, it's still all in there, so it says no portion, even with the no limit in time, no portion of the image may scroll, twirl, change color, imitate movement in any manner, or meet the characteristics of a flashing sign.
But the thing is, you know, it can go in constantly flashing, right?
Like can't be flashing.
Flashing, it can change.
Change means it, it's going to be changed, so from one sign to another. So that will be, looks, if zero seconds mean it will be look like flashing.
Well, that's, it can't be that.
Characteristics of a flashing sign.
I don't know, I mean, it makes sense to have some number in there, but.
Yeah.
If what the selectmen have asked for is zero, we.
I totally understand.
And then it comes down to the determination of what the building inspector thinks is correct or not.
Flashing, there's some.
So he, they will always argue, you know, zero seconds, I'm changing my sign. So it's not, you know, it looks like flashing, but it's not.
That's the problem with zero. Zero becomes animation.
Yeah.
Well, no, they're changing, I, I'm not sure if it says a message, because if your message is, Town Pool opens up April 50th, whatever it might be, and then you go to another one, and it changes within a second, you're never gonna be able to read it, so you're changing the message. If you're showing, uh, I don't know, a picture or something, and then it changes a little bit so it looks like it's moving, that's where it's flashing, or it goes on and off, that's not changing the message. So the message has to change, isn't, what's the phrasing on it?
Full digital image or portion thereof may change, but no portion of the image may scroll, twirl, change, change color, imitate movement in any manner, or meet the characteristics of a flashing sign.
So does that mean that the school would be able to put these snowflakes on the sign?
Correct.
Yeah.
Those are not legal right now.
Right, because, I mean, this is there, right, this word, wordage is there now with the time of it.
That kind of, it all depends on what town meeting wants, that's the people who are gonna decide, so. We can present it and listen to the comments and then kind of adjust as we need.
It's harder to adjust there than here, this is the place to do.
Yes.
Okay.
Just one more question while we're still on that section. As I said, right now, the current language, um, which is, this portion is not proposed to be changed. So the current language reads the full digital image or portion thereof may change. Do we want to consider removing or portion thereof? So we just say the full digital image may change? So that you can't just change, you know, get away with it by changing part, but not all of it? You know, so it's sort of, here's one image, the whole screen, and when you, next time you change it, you've gotta change the whole screen, so you can't sort of get around it by changing it.
Like they're trying to sell milk and they're showing the milk bottle tipping each time, something like that, so it's not animation.
Or if you had something that the word.
Not that they would ever do that at Cumberland Farms, no.
Oh, no.
I mean.
So that might be a change.
Somebody would want to propose, maybe? Okay.
Well, then for that matter, you want to add words to, to say not just image, but message?
Yeah, I'm not sure how to put that message idea in there.
I mean, it, at least this section anyway, I mean, let me see if I can pull it, pull it up, but. It seems to be, you know, both parts of the sentence, it seems to be referring to the full digital image. And so I think image in that sense is used as a general term describing, you know, sort of whatever's on the screen, whether it's text or whether it's a picture. You know, it's still sort of an image, in a sense.
Well, we can discuss it when we're drafting the, um, the article.
Yeah.
So, as long as, if we're not getting any public input, then.
Okay.
Well, we did, but thank you very much for.
No, anymore, yeah, we appreciate any comments, it's, it's great. If you have other ideas, that would be helpful.
Okay, uh, let's, I guess, close the public hearing, do you want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Someone should.
Do you want to eat at the last motion?
Motion to close the public hearing on the signed by law?
Second, all in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then, all right, so we'll, next.
The next meeting, we'll, you'll have a draft of the article wording. Cheryl, well, I'm kidding.
He's taking care of the six, six assessment, you know.
We can use the Wetlands bylaw as a guide.
As a template, so we can have.
Kind of a help to.
Oh, goodness gracious, really? That took four years to get to where it is.
No, 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 just the way it's laid out, no.
Oh, all right. Okay. So, uh, and we'll bring it, we'll put it on the agenda for next week to, to discuss, okay. All right, everybody ready to move on to our 8:30 at quarter nine? Okay, um, we're here for preliminary, do you have something to read? There you go.
Nope, it's not a hearing.
No, we didn't do the hearing.
It's not a hearing. Preliminary subdivision.
So we don't read anything, we don't do anything, we just have system meetings?
Yes, he does the presentation and.
Present all you can.
And he asks questions.
All right. Simple enough. Good evening, my name is Andrew Long from Summit Engineering Survey. Here on behalf of Walden Brook Realty LLC, project proponents for a proposed subdivision off the end of Westland Circle. Just so the audience and the board understands where this project is proposed. Uh, it's an existing subdivision that was created in the 70s, Westland Circle and Davidson Street. Public ways are here at the end of, uh, Westland Circle is pro, uh, excuse me, Woodland Street. And right across in that intersection is the public park. Lawrence Street is located off to the north of the, uh, subject property, and then Prospect Street is located out here.
With no connection to Prospect Street?
There is no, uh, no connection to Prospect Street, no. Uh, the parcel, the subject property is an 11.2 acre parcel. There is a unconstructed stub of Westland Circle located right here that where this proposal will continue. And then the subject property itself extends out beyond, uh, here. Surrounding uses include a water tower for the water, this Boylston Water District, and then this residential use, again, as I noted in the subdivision here, and then the dead end street of, of Lawrence Street here. And then the remaining portion right now is, is unutilized property land. General lay of the land, it's, it is fairly undulating, it comes down, and then comes up on a knoll, and then proceeds back down, you know, up here. There is an existing wood line located here at a parcel division line, and then the, the back portion is, uh, open, open space or middle land. So what we're proposing tonight, or the proponents proposing, is a conventional subdivision, deep lots. The road length from the center line of, should I use that?
No, it just doesn't make, be pointed somewhat towards you.
Sorry. The, uh, the roadway center line is approximately 750 feet from the center line of the intersection with Davidson Street, out to the end of the cul-de-sac. Uh, conventional lots, 40,000 square foot minimum. Uh, we've depicted them with some, uh, normally consized houses for the site, located around the perimeter of the back portions of lot, go all the way up to over, almost three acres from Lot 6. Uh, utilities include a low pressure sewer system. Uh, given the location and the, and the grades on the site, there isn't enough elevation to get gravity sewer out to Westland Circle, so we're proposing a low pressure sewer system that would tie into the city sewer or the municipal sewer system. All the homes will be, uh, supplied with municipal water with a hydrant at the end of the, into the cul-de-sac for fire protection. In terms of waivers, if you look on your first sheet of the, of the plan set, we have requested three waivers as part of the preliminary process. Uh, the first one, dealing with drainage on the cul-de-sac, there was a request or requirement in there that the interior of the cul-de-sac be utilized for drainage. Uh, this particular site, the water comes down in two portions, once through a knoll or a crevice here between the existing homes and the knoll, and then the remaining water drains off to the west. So we plan on capturing most of the surface water through this detention basin system here, and then an overland flow detention basin up there, up to the north of Lot 6. So we don't feel that utilizing the inside of a, of a cul-de-sac would, would, uh, be of a benefit to this particular project. The second one is sidewalks, requesting their relief on construction of sidewalks on the street. All of Davidson Street and Westland Circle, 40 foot right away, there are no existing sidewalks in that entire area for this to connect to. And then secondly, there is no provision or proposal to extend this road or subdivision tying to Lawrence Street where you'd want some kind of interconnectivity. Uh, the third waiver requested it has to do with proposing parks. Uh, this is a fairly small subdivision, uh, and there is an existing park, as I noted, at the end of Westland Circle, right across the street on Woodward Street. And then the last one is a very technical component. The existing right of way for Westland Circle is only 40 feet wide, and then we're proposing a 50 foot wide right of way for the new, new work. However, the alignment or the existing condition of the property lines for the abater come to a specific point at this intersection with the, uh, existing right of way. And we're just requesting relief because we cannot physically make 50 feet wide for a very short duration for six feet along the alignment.
What would it be?
Pardon?
How wide would it be in that area?
Uh, right here, it's 45 feet, and then it tapers out to 50 feet.
And, and further out where it connects to the Davidson Road?
What, Westland Circle is, is 40 feet wide.
So it goes 40 feet in and then at the curve kind of expands out to 50?
Yes. Yeah. Now this, excuse me, we have no control over that, that's the existing right of way. So we're, the, this property fronts on a, on a right of way that exists, and, and we don't have a, a way or a mechanism to widen that. However, the proposed road, having this within the.
So you don't own that little section that's, that's the town's?
No, that is the town's.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
So we can emanate to me, and I've never done that.
You don't get to do that in this town.
Wait for the easier.
Okay.
Uh, that concludes at least the, the overall project or, or premise. Uh, we have received a letter from VHB with some comments that they had on, on the preliminary subdivision, and the only other comment I received was a, a phone call from the police chief indicating that he would have the sergeant write a letter at some point in time because of a conflict in interest where he's, he owns the abiding property, but other than that, I haven't received any other commentary from anybody. Do we have any?
We have some comments from the Water District. Uh, District has reviewed the reference plan and provides the following comments for the planning board to consider. There is a proposed connection to the District's pub, public water supply to supply this development. Any extensions to the public water system would require a thorough engineering review of the existing system to determine any necessary improvements that would be required. The developer would be responsible for any cost of an engineering review, and if needed, any improvements that are required for the extension in accordance with Mastering Water Regulations 310, CMR 22.00, and the District's rules and regulations as amended. Should you require any comments, please feel, feel free to contact me. Um, you're, you're intending to use town water?
Yes. Yeah.
I think there was something else about the, uh, flow, uh, fire hydrants?
Yes, fire hydrant located at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah. Yeah.
They're every 500 feet though, right?
Yeah, I think we've got another one.
Okay.
I'm sorry, there is a second one there.
And then?
There is an existing hydrant right at the intersection of Davidson and Westland Circle.
Okay, all right, so there's flow at that one. Is there any reason to think that there'd be problem flow 75 feet up the street?
Well, no, well, it's kind of going uphill, but I wasn't sure. The water tower is nearby, that was one of the questions that I had was, has the water district shown any interest in making a loop or connection? I don't know that there is a connection already from the tower down to, it's not Westland, what's the one that goes up?
Davidson?
Davidson, is there a connection from the water tower down to Davidson?
I don't know the configuration of there.
I'm just thinking for the water system, it might be an improvement to make the connection with the property? Make the loop, right.
Okay, well, let's go right into the fire department's approval. I have submitted feedback to the planning board for the fire department on the definitive sub- they call it definitive, but the year subdivision plan review for the cul-de-sac at Westland Circle. These suggestions are for the safety and well-being of the future residents, construction workers and firefighters responding to the proposed project. First comment, after review of the proposed site and discussion with the West Boylston Water Department, the fire department would request the builder supply to the fire department the required documentation to fulfill the requirements in the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in West Boylston, Mass. Section five, Part F, number four, I or II. This would require the builder to show the quantity of water present presently available, a flow test, at the site be adequate for fire suppression purposes or present a satisfactory compliance alternative prepared by qualified fire protection engineer. That's the first comment. Second comment is the fire department would ask that the proposed road be built to the planning board standards for a public road from the beginning. This would allow the proposed road to qualify for the town acceptance to ensure proper snow removal and maintenance in the future. In the event that the project is excessively delayed, the town would be supplied with a proper roadway. I think when they say from the beginning, they mean from the beginning of construction. You were talking about going from 45 to 50?
Yeah.
What's our? I think it's timeframe, not location.
So basically, we've had in the past where the developer on a subdivision only wants to make it a 12 foot wide path to get up to the house lots when he's constructing them. And then we have a fire in one of those houses. The fire truck can't really get there, so when you're developing the road, you're gonna do your rough grading, your finished grading and your base course before you start doing any building work. So there will be access for fire access, so.
And they had a third comment, fire department would suggest that the roadway be made to a minimum of 22 feet wide before any construction begins in the subdivision. This would allow the fire department proper access to the site during the construction phase of the project. That's sort of, yeah. Fire department will be happy to meet with either board to discuss our recommendations. Thomas Walsh.
So what is your, you didn't say what your cross-section was for the?
It was the, it was the, it was 22 feet was the cross section. We weren't asking for any relief on that.
Okay. That's all the approvals I got. So, and you said you spoke to the policeman and he's not going to comment, or?
I was under the impression you, how we were, he was going to supply one, but.
Yes, he, he's in a butter, so he cannot comment.
He's just gonna have somebody else?
So his sergeant was going to comment.
Okay.
That was as far as.
I don't have any, but that is probably coming.
They have 30 days, so.
No, I'm not concerned, I just don't have it to read it to the minutes.
Yeah. Any questions from the board?
It's taking your job.
I know it. Do you have any questions?
I have a bunch, but I'll let you guys if you want.
Okay, start with your bunch.
Is this within the aquifer protection district? I don't know it that well, but I'm not, I know there's a town wells or around Lee Street. And I'm not sure where the line is for the, we don't have a map in town.
I remember that, there was a comment about it being.
So we just have.
It used to be, it used to be land owned.
No, it's a watershed protection.
Oh, okay.
So it's within the watershed protection area. So, but if it's within the town's well, the aquifer to the well, it's a different lot size, so I'm hoping you check that.
I don't believe it is.
You want to verify that?
Yeah, we'll verify that.
And so you're going to have a homeowners association to maintain the sewer and drainage? Or is the sewer all individual pumps on the lots?
There are individual pumps on the lots, however, there is a common line to be shared that would have to be covered under the homeowners agreement.
And that's going to be located outside of the pavement?
Right now it's proposed inside, which component are you talking about?
The sewer, the homeowners association, the sewer line, the common pipe.
Right now it's proposed in the right of way, in the roadway.
We don't, we, I don't know that we've had any of those in the past, but.
A common pressurized sewer line?
Yes.
I don't, I don't, my street and I got all pumps.
I'm not sure, check with our DPW. He may want that under the, under the grass area, so if it blows or is a problem, you don't have to rip up the road.
Yeah.
But I.
I thought that one individual ones.
Well, you're gonna have individual pumps on each lot and you're gonna tie into a common force main, like the force mains in town. They run down the road, but that's because the town is doing the work. It's possible that it goes in the road, but confirm with the DPW, that's.
I mean, ours are in the road, but I think we all have our own line up to where it becomes a gravity feed. So that they can't, you can't, if the check valve fails, you're not pumping it into the other guy's pump. So I don't, I don't know where the rules go on that, but I don't know if you can have one common.
It's a typical design to go into a common line, a shared line.
I don't, I have special. Okay.
And you're going to have a homeowners association, and so we're going to need to see the paperwork and all the agreements. I think we have some standard language in the subdivision regulations for the homeowners association.
And does that come up now, or when it becomes a real?
Definitive subdivision, this is just, he's, he knows he needs it, so that he knows in the design and the planning that you're gonna need to have that. You're gonna have an O and M plan, we're gonna have to submit all that. The other thing I had was on your lot, is we have a minimum 120 foot lot width. And it's a straight line measurement as opposed to a curved line?
Straight line at the front of the house?
At the.
On these?
Frontage, right, so as long as it's 120 foot from point to point.
It's a cord length?
Yes.
Cord or line?
Cord, not the.
So it can't go around?
Right, it doesn't go around, it goes straight across the cord.
Okay, so like, okay.
So I'm, I think I looked at it, there was one that was close.
Right, lot six, it's the closest.
Yeah, but it was huge, so.
Yeah, so I mean, there's enough frontage this way that we can slide those over, right, and accommodate that.
What else was the other? And checking the water connection, and I think connectivity for walking. We might, in the bylaws, we're trying to always have connectivity. And there's people over on Prospect Street that walk and it would be good to be able to have a walking path to get over to the playgrounds, to CVS, whatever.
You mean from Lawrence Street?
From Lawrence.
So cut through?
Some kind of a, it looks like there's a big wide open area where you've got some drainage stuff going on.
Yes, right here.
If you can incorporate, I don't know what the property ownership is off of lease, off of Lawrence Street. But I think DCR owns a portion, so that.
Yeah, there's a MDC abater.
Yep, so you might be able to connect into that location and have just a small walking path. So that, we're trying to encourage pedestrian access and intermodal type of stuff.
So they can take their ATB?
So they can take their snowmobiles down there, yeah?
Awesome.
No, just to have people walking, a lot of people go and walk, I don't know, a lot of people want to walk up Lawrence Street, but.
It's deep.
It's a good exercise.
It's good exercise.
But see if you can incorporate something like that into it.
Okay, well, he says he doesn't want sidewalks, do we have argument for sidewalks?
Good question, do we want to have sidewalks?
We want to have the sidewalks.
We do?
No.
I don't, I'm not sure if it's. In the past, we've always had one sidewalk on one side, which is what we did with newer circle, which was similar to this, 750 feet long. So normally we go with one.
New circle has a sidewalk, are you sure? I'll leave it on a sidewalk.
I think you required it.
I wanted.
I know, I need to check that, I'm pretty sure, but I, I don't know.
Well, if he puts it on, then we definitely want it on here. Although they'd have trouble down here at this 40 foot section.
Well, no, he still would, it would connect and then it would go into the road. So you would have a handicap access down onto the road, but.
No, I'm just thinking that this little narrow section down here, I mean, he'd be 22 plus.
Yeah, one side.
All right, it would fit, I guess, all right.
It would fit.
Okay.
But we, I think, I'm not sure about that, that might be something we decide in the definitive. We don't make any final decisions on the preliminary anyway, but we can take them under recommendation and make it consistent is all I think we should do.
I think there's arguments either way, I mean, a sidewalk needs maintenance and if there's going to be a homeowners organization, they might not have much benefit and then they have to maintain it or, you know, that sort of thing.
Goodell, what's that one, Old Century Farm has sidewalks. Our side is another.
Well, it is good.
It's another, that's only a 200 foot long cul-de-sac and that's got a sidewalk. So.
No, I know.
Why don't we go with the definitive as a sidewalk and then we can talk about not having it, but I would expect one sidewalk, not two sidewalks. Because I think this, the regulations say one on each side, right? And so we were.
So we'll meet halfway? And then underground utilities?
Yes.
Underground utilities.
And that was all.
And then there was along with the homeowners association was a bond or covenant issue to be.
Well, the bond, you're gonna, when you do the construction, when you want to start building on the houses and have some type of a release, we like to have a cash bond or some, our treasurer says, we, our treasurer says we like to have cash in hand because if the project goes under, the bond is usually not any good either. So that's what her recommendation has been, either cash or a savings account type of thing.
The amount to be determined by?
Well, the amount is, matters how much he's got done and what's left to do. That's, that's down the road.
It's still no public comment, this preliminary, right?
This is just preliminary, right? Anything?
I don't know, any more?
Oh, did you get anything from the conservation commission as far as wetlands? Because I know there are wetlands to the south coming up towards the corner there.
Is there an email from them? Was there a contact on email about this?
I was at their meeting on Monday and they said they were going to go out and look at it in the next couple of days. So I wasn't sure if they had and gotten back to you.
We've traversed down here, it's quite a ways away off locusts for some wetlands. And then also up to the west, there is some wetlands, again, well off the locusts.
So there's no little stream that kind of goes?
Oh, this is the only one in question that we, you know, based on VHB's commentary that we gotta come up with, that is in fact a stream or not.
You should probably check the mass GIS. No, it's not Luther, what's the, Oliver.
Oliver.
Thematic views. And there's one for Title V septic systems that have a connection to zone As. And so the zone As are the 200 feet, within 200 feet of the tributaries. So you can check to see if there's anything on that, and that'll be a good reference. And then verify it in the field, if it's on that, and they're not always right. But at least you know where to look and then make a decision.
Yeah, field determination.
This is where I got it, VHB thinks it is, so it is within Gatesburg Watershed.
It is within Gatesburg Watershed, it's always going to be within Gatesburg Watershed. Because it's where the water ends up flowing.
Yeah, okay. Did you, and did you accommodate their VHB's comments, other comments about the tighter block and stuff like that?
You know, in terms of sizing pipes or that's a definitive process, one thing that.
I think they just wanted to show that.
Yeah, the water sizing and the existing conditions, when I did in fact talk to the water department, they were, they don't have very good records of what's going on up there, so.
Go dig safe.
We can go digging for it. So, yeah, we will incorporate their comments in the process.
And you're going to come back with a letter of response to theirs?
Yes.
Or a summary of all these things?
Okay, I'm done.
Time's up?
I guess so, yeah, now it's up.
Yeah, that's all, I think that's all I have.
Any other comments, any other? What's your, what's your schedule like? I mean, what do you, when do you want to move from preliminary or do you not know when you're gonna?
Oh, well, I mean, we would expect a definitive filing pretty quickly.
So, okay.
We've done a lot of, it's probably, I don't know how many other preliminaries you get in here, but there's a lot more legwork in this already than, than we might get from most preliminaries. We've done all the field work, the survey, the power surveys, clean. We've done some soil testing out there for the drainage, we've already started some of the drainage work, so we're well along. We just want to make sure we incorporate any of your comments into the final design.
And make sure you have soil tests, whatever the DEP requires, two per infiltration basin or whatever type of treatment you have. They say how many soil tests are needed and make sure we know what the high groundwater level is and the materials.
Down here where you cut into the town's road stub there?
Yep.
Have you been surveying or something like that and have you noticed any, I think there was rumor that one of the properties, their shed was on that property or something like that?
There is a shed right on the town property right here.
Town shed? Probably not.
It's a, it's a property owner.
Not a water shed?
No, it belongs to this, this resident right here.
Okay, and are you amicably negotiating with them to move their shed for them?
They don't let us on, off their property. I'm not aware of any further comments.
Okay.
And who is the owner on this now, what's the, because it was one thing and now I think it's another.
It was came in as Malden. Malden, Malden Brook Realty, that hasn't changed since.
I thought it sold a little while ago to some coastal somebody. I don't know, I thought it was sold to some coastal realty something or other. As long as we have the, when you come in with the definitive, then make sure the owner is the real owner. Because it's going to go on the D, we want to make sure.
I lost the letter.
Sorry, no, it's just, it's a preliminary, so that's.
No, I lost the Form C, whatever that was.
There should be a D reference on the form.
Yeah, I know, that's what I lost. Hopefully we'll find that before the next meeting.
You need the Form C?
No, no, I know I shouldn't have.
Is it in the folder?
No, it was a copy, oh, there it is, got it. Malden Brook Realty, yes. I don't know the owner. I can't really read the name of the person, but.
Goddard?
Is it Goddard?
Is that, well, no, it was something, it doesn't matter, we got. We're gonna need, if it's under a realty trust, we need to have some, I guess some documentation somehow. So who is, whoever is signing it has the right.
Has the right to do that, yeah.
Need an authorization from the HOS or whatever.
If, yes, if it's not, Mr. and Mrs. Somebody. And even then we want both.
Okay, so I guess we're.
That's good.
I don't know how we end up preliminary, just say we're done?
That was it, next item on the agenda.
All right, thank you for coming in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know, not very beneficial, I need something.
Yeah, it's not a lot of closure.
Speaking of never closing.
We had a letter here from Dr. Tajan that we should all read before the.
Absolutely.
Regarding the same thing.
Can we scan that and email that out to the board members?
Get copies everybody, just to peruse. Oh, it's pretty.
Can I also have that one that you got from Whitman, so I can just copy that before tonight?
Yeah.
And I'll give it back to you.
Yep.
Perfect.
I can't stretch that far. Thanks.
Sure. Make it easy on them.
It might skip you on the sending now for that.
The important point is you all get, I'll give the letter.
Yeah, that's what we're making arrangements to do. Here's drawings, here's that. Man, you're gonna have a lot of carrying back to do.
Yeah, you are.
I feel bad that the people came and they weren't able to do anything.
They were, I think, part of the proponent.
Oh, they were? They weren't the lady with the shed?
No.
All right. All right, all business, complete streets, want to say what we did?
For the complete seat policy, we were before the select board. And we explained the entire complete seat policy. So they want to put it on the public hearing on May 4th.
Oh, is it May 4th?
Seven, seven o'clock PM. Yeah.
Didn't they come out? You did?
Yep.
I have Laura Griffin Burns, I wasn't going to do that one.
Do we have to go on May 4th?
I'm sorry?
Do we have to go before them?
Yeah, well, we want to support it, just the idea, just if there are questions, it's, they're not as familiar as you. You and I went to the meeting, so.
Yeah.
You and him? You and him?
Yeah, not you.
Rajeshna, yes.
Good.
So that's all, that's all happened, you know?
Yes.
So you're both committed, 7 o'clock on the 4th?
What day is that, a Wednesday?
Probably.
Wednesday, May 4th.
Sounds right.
Well, is that their meeting?
Yes, it's a Wednesday, yes.
So the planning board chat should be there too, right?
Yeah, we should post the meeting, yeah, we should post the meeting then.
That would be a quorum if the three of us were there.
Showed up.
Is there an excuse not to go?
Yes.
Don't go, and I won't go. I'll, I'll make sure I email Cheryl. All right, we did.
So we have that, but they, so they acted on it and so one of our lines was checked off. That they, there was an adoption and the next one below that was a vote to hear it type of thing. And that's what they did on the beginning of April. So we got one date checked off. Now the public hearing is gonna be, this is, the public hearing isn't required under the complete streets process. But it's something that in the town's general bylaws. Any change to a general bylaw which, or policy that's gonna impact the town, has to have a public hearing and the notice has to be on the cable TV station and-
On the website or something like that?
On the website, but not in the newspaper, right, so.
Does it have to go to town, do you, or just?
No.
No. All right. So revised Worcester Corporate Center expiration date?
Yeah, I just let, I put that, that's in your sign. Little green folder. You can just sign that. Actually, we all have to sign it again.
We all, cause we change, we put-
What if we don't get elected again?
You're gonna sign today. Just do what I tell you.
All right, we'll don't do that, we'll do that in a minute. And we'll talk to the Cumberland Farms guy while he's here. Well, we're not, you're not really on the agenda. I mean, what, you're here just to submit-
I'm here for new business, yeah, so if somebody else has one in front of us-
No, we're at the end.
He will be on the citizens' comments, right, the last one.
He's not a citizen. I mean, citizen something.
Citizen something, but.
He's not a citizen of here, I mean, I'm just, you can submit and that's really about all we should really do.
You have a subvention going on, do you?
Yes.
And common and a big fan of West Boys and Planning Board meetings.
I just love this drive.
You can get these at Cumberland Farms if you need to.
You can. So, I was here maybe a month ago.
You were here at the last meeting?
We were like five months before that. We heard some more from the Department of Transportation, Massachusetts DOT. And also, I think there was, so there's pavement markings, additional pavement markings that I will show you.
They said they wanted to do a bunch at the light or something?
Yeah, here, and then a dividing line and then arrows and a stop bar is what Mass DOT wanted.
And this is on your thing because you're gonna do it?
No, it's-
Yes.
There we go, look at that.
Yes, but it's not-
Cumberland Farms should do something they don't have to do.
No.
We're somewhat altruistic. So that's the first piece. The second piece is, and I think it came up at the last meeting, about the canopy and the amount of area. And if we were to keep the canopy with the supports where it-
See, we should have done the structural thing last time.
Well, work itself out. The way it was, when you looked at the plan, it was dispenser, canopy, support, canopy, support, dispenser. And so if we were to keep it like that, we would have to put these huge steel beams to kinda cantilever out to hold up the canopy. So instead of that, what they're doing is putting support, dispenser, dispenser, support. And then the last piece is the, there's an approval out there for a 2,500-
Not anymore.
From, I hear it's almost there because of the Permanent Extension Act, it's like-
It expired because you changed the plans. This plan is for the plan, this area that you're working on was the area that was the plan that was referenced in that site plan review. So that site plan approval was based on the liquor store construction and the work that was under here. What you guys did, you came in and that was what we asked you. We said, are you proposing anything else on this beyond your lease line? And you said, no, so we issued the approval to supersede the old site plan review approval. And so now the only approval is for the areas within your lease line.
Okay. I will take that back.
Yeah.
And let them know. But we were under the impression that there was a 2,500 square foot building approved here and there was a drainage line that went to essentially nowhere. Somewhere, and so there was a discussion with DCR, well, what can we do? And so what we've done is tied in that drainage line to our storm scepter here, so it goes to somewhere.
All the drainage from this parking lot goes into there?
From this area, so if it is ultimately developed with that 2,500 square foot. And so if in the future there's a-
Parking and everything.
Parking and everything. It's already taken care of, going into our storm scepter, being treated and discharged. And we totally comply with all of the Mass Stormwater Regulations.
Still.
Still, yes.
And is enough elevation to make that?
Yes. Yeah, and we actually-
Question I had, cause I thought you raised everything up, so I wasn't sure that it was enough.
Yeah, no, the people smarter than me figured it out and they said it works, no problem. They've got the new storm water-
So it should be an easy site plan review?
Yeah, and that's the, right, you would think so. Well, I mean, you would hope.
Go on back. Bring the sign in too, we'll talk about the sign for a couple of days.
No more signs. So I mean, what I'm here for, because we're really obviously chomping at the bit to get this thing started. And so before we did anything, obviously out of deference-
So how do you?
So I mean, I'm just asking for-
You may wanna just stub the pipe at your, wherever you can stub it, where your work stops. And then know that they're gonna come in with something and submit your drainage calc. Cause they're gonna have to submit something to show that it works. And then, I mean, it's, we can do it. It's just-
Yeah, I'm not sure where, if this is an existing pipe that comes to our line here. And then if it does, it probably just makes sense to-
Connect it through.
Attach it anyways, just because once it's underneath, because it goes into the storm scepter and then it comes out here.
Goes out to where?
It goes out this way, it doesn't go back to the drainage over there.
I thought all the drainage was over there.
Oh, and then it comes out this way and then over.
This way, yeah, and then over.
Yeah, so-
What?
It goes into the wetland over here on the left side.
Right, so this was-
So their drainage goes, makes a full loop all the way around, why don't they just come this way?
Well, originally it went back that way into the, into the rain gardens that-
Oh, the rain gardens.
That were never constructed.
So this, here's the, and I'm sorry that it's so small, but there's the previous approval. You see, it goes here and then down there, there's nothing from this other side of the street.
No, I'm just wondering why their design ever went all the way around the, the, the coogos down there.
I think their original design went this way and went out.
This, I think this always flowed, if you look at where the arrows and where it's flowing. It flows here to there. And it just, nothing was coming in from this angle, so this one is-
They're adding a new pipe.
Coming in, right, coming in, but that's going directly into the storm scepter.
Oh, and the benefit is that it's treated.
And then it's treated.
Instead of just coming directly this way.
It's a good idea and you probably should put it in when you're doing construction.
So you don't have to-
And just get it in there so that all we have to do is check and make sure it's okay. VHB loves checking drainage after it's in place, but-
So I think that's-
It looks, it's another at-risk type of thing, so that-
If you don't connect it.
No, if they leave the stub, but if the Vortecnics unit or whatever you have in there in storm scepter. If that unit doesn't, or isn't able to treat it to the DEP stormwater standards, they're gonna have to do something on the site plan on the, on the site.
They'll probably disconnect and put their own in, I mean, on this side.
Well, it's already existing and easy. You put the stub in, you make it happen, but you're putting that section of pipe in at risk.
Right.
To, if it's not big enough or doesn't have enough slope to carry the pipe, whatever it might be. But we're okay with putting that in and amending yours to have that pipe. But it's not giving the site plan review to that person.
Understood, and I'll pass that on.
He's gonna love that.
Uh, yeah, how do you, why do you think I'm here to begin with? So I, I guess if, I'm looking for an approval, if you're willing to give it. We've got-
And it's for three things, it's the stanchions?
Yep, for the stanchions.
The drainage and the markings?
And these markings, that's correct. And I brought a new-
Substantial change.
Can we have a crosswalk?
If you're doing all these markings.
Well, if they wanted it, they would have asked, they would have asked for it.
I had, I had talked to the fire chief, I mean, the police chief. And he said it was his thought that maybe when they have a sidewalk on the other side of the road.
They'll put it in?
They may request assistance, some financial assistance from Cumberland Farms to put a crosswalk in there.
If it increases business and promotes safety, then I'm sure.
That's the thing that we'd be looking for, but right now it's not going. It's not going anywhere, so he was okay with not having it.
So that's-
So, I mean, is it a substantial change or just a rev to his drawing?
Do we want?
I mean, did you, did you receive a copy of the CD that they had with the first original plan?
When did you start calling them, the final, final draft? Super final?
I'm running out. I've got another description for it.
I'm not sure if there's some way we can just have this as being reflected on the ASBILs. Cause sometimes we have-
Well, they're gonna keep doing this though, we gotta keep track of what they're doing.
Well, I know at the end, there's kinda like this audit of what was approved and what was actually constructed. So what I had them do was put on the first page and the fourth page, which is what you guys have been signing, a signature block, if you wanna go through that exercise to sign this and then-
And it's a new rev, I mean, it's new rev dated something?
Yeah, 4/12/16, so yesterday. Uh, this is-
How did you get on a hearing so quickly?
We didn't.
Public meeting.
We didn't, that's, he's not actually supposed to be here.
There's no, there's no need to have a public hearing, so it's only a public meeting. So I-
But it wasn't really a public meeting, cause we didn't get you on the agenda.
Right, it's a public meeting, cause we were all-
Well, it's a public meeting, but it wasn't a public meeting anybody knows about.
It's not a lot of technical, we don't need to send it out to VHB for calculations.
No, I'm really more worried about the, it's not anywhere.
We need to make sure that the final plan is the final plan, that's-
I mean, that's where, that's why I-
I don't mind doing a rev, signing a new rev drawing.
Let's do that, but then we have to amend the approval, right? Isn't that what we do, we amend the approval and write a new date on it? Or have we not done that?
I don't think we did that.
You haven't done that before, cause I recorded, cause I waited to record your original approval until after to see what you did at the last meeting.
So when we changed it the second time, you, you recorded as that one being the final?
No, you only recorded it once.
No, I only recorded it once. I would imagine that, so at the end of all this, cause this is, this would typically be just one of those construction changes that they would have just done on the field and got a change order, talked to the building commissioner, just to- But we thought that given this project and the discussions we've had and that I just-
I mean, like coming to meetings.
Before you guys. That it was wisest to come in and talk about the canopy and the drainage and especially the pavement markings. So at the end of it, there'll probably be obviously ASBILs.
ASBILs.
And then there'll be an audit between the two and then-
I just wanna get as much as they know about now.
I'm happy to do it, but I'm sure it'll be on records with, record with the town.
Yeah, well, usually on our approval, the approval says this is the set of plans and it's got this date and then we amended it.
We can hold that file.
You guys have good memories, that's good. I wouldn't, I wouldn't-
We'll have the current drawing, the problem is that the, the letter won't reflect that rev of the drawing.
So, I mean, I guess my suggested solution to that is once it's finished. I mean, you've got, you've got-
Yeah, but then I'll forget.
You've got this, it'll be, it'll be on file with the town and the planning board. So this is what we're operating off of and then if there are changes, obviously you-
Well, that's what, that's what I wanna do, I wanna make this what we operate, so the building inspector will look at this.
Totally.
But our letter doesn't say this right now.
Right, and it doesn't say the last one either.
But we don't need, as long as we send him an email and say the final plan is signed by us.
This rev and something.
And it's dated, whatever.
And I'm coming back for you because we are sure that you-
Make the sign bigger, a bunch of things in the future.
Just to make sure of that.
All right. As I motion, we sign the revised, revised-
Revised, revised final, second final, primary, final, super-
Till the next time, right.
We have another meeting in two weeks.
Oh, a hundred percent said, that's right. We have a hundred percent said and now we're beyond a hundred, like a hundred and ten percent said.
This is a hundred and-
Fifteen percent said. What's it? Thirteen.
And you're gonna make a copy of these and send it to us electronically and a hard copy, so we can put the hard copy in the file also?
Yeah, absolute full size sheets.
Full size.
Yep, so I'll take, what I'll do is I'll take these, I'll get them to Bowler, they'll scan them, they'll put them on a CD and then they'll-
And then get me the full size.
Then, yeah, they'll send those with this to you.
Not a floppy?
Not a floppy. I was at a, a hearing last night in Hatfield for this. It's five colleges in corporate, it's Amherst, Hampshire, Smith, Mount Holyoke, and UMass Amherst. And what they wanna do is put a library annex, which is gonna be like a 36,000 square foot building that's gonna store, it's 35 feet tall. It's gonna store 2.5 million volumes of books. And the question came up, what are you gonna do with all the floppy disks that you guys have? You know, I was like, what are you talking about? What is that?
It's in our bylaw.
Right. Floppies?
Floppy disks.
Really?
Well, that was new back when I started doing this stuff.
So is a, is a PDF okay?
As long as it's on a floppy, I guess.
We don't have a computer that runs floppies anymore.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'll get it to you then.
Exactly.
You got it.
Like a coaster. See, you should come to more meetings, that's what it's like, it's great times.
It's damn.
Do you live in town?
No.
Oh, then don't come to any.
No.
Might as well live in town, alls I need is a, alls I need is a car at the store and I'm-
It's like him.
You're not kidding.
And you said you're moving though, is that?
Moving to the store.
He's going up to that, the Business Center.
We're going into-
In front of a-
Your hostess, 2:15.
The Wonder Store, Wonder Bridge.
Oh, really?
Across the street, these guys.
That's why I was interested to see this stuff here. Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
You should have said that louder, you're on cable TV, free advertising.
Are you going in?
Well, that's true.
No, I don't know.
No, we're still green. All right, thank you for coming in.
This was revision 14, yeah.
This was the hundred and ten percent said.
Right now, projected second week of May.
They keep sending you back.
It's unbelievable. They're like, okay, you're the one who can get this through the town.
Just go to West Boys and you love that place.
I get to see my folks tonight, which is nice.
But the, the bigger benefit of the whole move is gonna be all the other room that I'll have. Like right now, for example, my wife has a eight by five foot office where she's gonna have a 20 by 15 foot office over there. So that'll make her happier, so.
Do you still have the, are you gonna have something like the downstairs track?
We're gonna have that inside on the same level, yeah. But that downstairs track thing didn't work over there because of the location of it. It was, you know, again, one of those things, talk about the signs around the back of the building and nobody knew it was there.
My kids were on a kick for a little while, we went there, I don't know, a dozen times.
Super, super hard to promote it.
Yeah.
But now, we'll have it.
We'll see.
It'll be on the warehouse side of, of the hostess building. It's gonna be a forty, twenty-five and fifty foot track area.
How big was the one downstairs, like 20 by 20 or something?
It was, no, not even.
Not even?
Eighteen by, maybe eighteen by thirty, maybe. But it's not technically a track area, we're calling it a promotional area. Because it's gonna be multiple different things.
But it's not technically a track area, we're calling it a promotional area, because it's gonna be multiple different things. We're gonna have meeting, we'll be able to have club meetings there for the, the train club guys, the model club guys, all those clubs that are in the hobby world, um, they'll be coming in and having their meetings. Sorry?
You had that at the other place?
Sorry, all of it, no. We have about twenty-five hundred square feet that we're renting over there from Chashol. Cuz we have the, the double wide storefront, then we have our basement space that's below us, and I have basement space that goes from next door to us over to Dunkin' Donuts. I pretty much have a whole basement of that place. Which that, we're thinking about keeping for a little bit, for storage, so I don't have to rush and hustle and all at once.
That's great.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, no, thanks for having me.
It's always good to see you again.
Yeah, we joked about it last time, but look.
Tell me about it, we're trying.
Oh, you haven't had your pre-construction, I just sent an email to Graves to see what has gone on, cuz I saw the vehi- uh, loader up there, I think.
Yeah, it's out there, I don't know what...
So I was expecting things were gonna happen and I don't remember seeing a pre-construction meeting notes.
So if you could have Graves, or them talk to Graves?
Yeah, yeah, I think they, they talked to them about the drainage, just to make sure that they signed off on it as well, and they said, "Yeah, this makes sense," so they'll, um...
Yeah, they said they haven't reviewed it yet, they said, "It looks okay, but we haven't done a formal review and we'd have to be paid for that," so... But I'm not sure whether you may wanna just keep that, cuz we don't know really what's going on for that parcel, unless we're saying everything's a hundred percent impervious. And they, they run the calculations that way.
That's what I mean.
It's kind of up to figure out how you wanna do it. We could do it either way, I don't wanna slow them down, but it's one of those things.
I think, yeah, and they're candidly just...
Just, just make sure you pass along the message that that doesn't approve that site.
Loud and clear.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that'll be the message and don't worry about ours.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have the signed bylaws right there?
Yeah, a copy.
They're online, if you want.
Oh, me and online don't get along.
It's pages and... And online. It's like, six pages, no, eight pages?
It's a bunch of pages.
I have a question that I probably should've asked when we were under the sign bylaw stuff, but I wasn't sure that it applied to any of the stuff you guys were talking about. The garage door that's over there at the location, at the Wonder Bridge building, yeah, on the side, it's a twelve foot garage door. We wanna put like a, a wrap, if you will, like a mural, on that. Does that qualify as a sign?
Murals are listed in there, I don't remember what it says, but I know...
You mean, just like the one on the garage door on Hartwell Street?
On the, yeah.
That, that the sign guy makes, the guy with the T-shirt?
Oh, I don't know. Oh, where, uh, Conner Sign?
Yeah.
Oh, he's got like trucks on it, yeah, 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 right, yes, probably similar to that, I haven't seen it recently, but...
Oh, actually, I don't even know what's on it.
I'm not sure, I don't know that it can be advertising, it can be decorative, but...
That's what I, that was...
That's not even facing the road.
Turn four hobbies across it, then that's...
That's no, that's a sign, and that's too big.
So, I think, and if you have the kids from the high school do it as like this flowery thing, then that wouldn't either, I don't think, so it depends on what you're proposing, but...
But if you're a liquor store and it's a huge wide stale thing on the side...
Well, that's where it came from, because as you know who owns the building I'm renting, is, is Lisa.
It's near the end. Uh, so we've got a definition.
Oh, that's all that is?
Mural, a non-commercial picture or decoration typically painted, which is for artistic, cultural, or societal purposes. However, a mural is considered a commercial sign if it is related by language, logo, or pictorial depiction to the advertisement of any product or service, or the identification of any business.
So then it's a violation, I think?
Then it's not allowed.
Well, if you don't have that big turn four process, I think you're okay.
But like, if you, if you have the Dunkin' Donuts...
Just that right there, see the H?
What's the H?
It's the... We're partnering with a national franchise, Hobby Town, Hobby Town USA is a national franchise and store, so we're partnering with them. So our name is gonna change to Turn Four Hobby Town, instead of Turn Four Hobbies. So it's gonna, the Hobbies is gonna go away and the Hobby Town is gonna go in, but this is their main, like, signature.
I mean, if, if you're gonna put something on that is a logo, then it's a logo.
And I thought was to put...
As big as well as it is, it's a logo.
Our thought was to put that on that garage door, for one, to make the door look better, cuz it looks like shit right now.
Well, actually, if it's, we have a wall sign allowance, and that might be allowed under your size of wall signs, depending on how big, I mean, if you wanna make it twelve feet by whatever, that's more than what I think it could be allowed. But if it is smaller and it's, that's the only sign...
If the whole thing is white and that's as big as it can be, but in the middle...
You could put your sign on the door, is what I'm saying, but you wouldn't have another sign up somewhere else.
See, what I was trying to do with the franchise people, was I was trying to get them to let me get rid of this H?
Yeah.
And just have Turn Four Hobby Town as my sign, but then have that H on the door, to say, "Okay, I have your H on my, on my building," but it's not like...
That's what they need.
In my sign, they don't, they're not...
Do you want the original?
They're not so cool with that. But, so, so I understand that definition, that what we're talking about would be classified as a logo and would not be allowed.
Be a commercial sign.
Right. And be labeled as a, or identified as a...
It sounds like that's the, that's the intent, is to show their logo and that's right.
Yeah, so it's not that it wouldn't be allowed, it's that it would be counted on your total wall sign amount.
Right, so like, back to what, like what you said.
Yeah, it's logo, so it's not, it's not as artistic as you wish it would be.
Do it, but it counts towards whatever area, the maximum area. No, there would have to be a variance, and I don't know that a variance could be granted.
Yeah, I don't think I would.
That's happening about us.
I wouldn't want it, I wouldn't want it to take away from the other sign, cuz to me, the other signs with my name on it is more important than theirs, in my opinion. But that was, that was something that we've been thinking about doing, and I, before I go too crazy with the whole thing, I already talked to one sign guy and he can't do it, it's too big of a job for him to do it anyway, so, which is my typical sign.
You could check on the Hartwell Street.
You could ask that guy in, uh, the corner.
Well, that's who, that's who everybody's referring me to use for a sign guy, but...
Oh, and he's, he says it's too big?
No, he's not the one, he's, he's not my regular.
Well, there's other guys, there are actually painters in town that...
And that's what we were thinking, of painting it and having it, instead of like, a wrap, having it painted.
Is that, what's the door, is it like a section door, or is it a whole bunch of little slats?
No, it's got, uh, well, that's where the problem comes in, is there's normal sections, like a regular garage door, but within that, there's a bunch of...
Compluded whatever.
Yeah, a bunch of, you know, grooved areas, that would make a, a wrap or something very difficult.
Cuz there are painters that have done like, this right past Institute Park, is an Italian restaurant, and one of the guys in town I know did all the, like, the Italian murals in the place, so you walk in and it's like being in Venice or somewhere.
Similar to Gerardo's, when you go into Gerardo's or something.
Yeah, I'm not sure who did that, but you can check with them.
Yeah, it's very nice, too, but that's inside, you can do whatever you want, inside, sure.
Where is this place, where are you going to open?
Right across the street from, um, um, checkerboard.
Yeah.
The old Wonder Bridge.
The Wonder Bridge.
Oh, the Wonder Bridge, okay.
Yeah, we're going in there.
It's been in the works for a while.
Yeah, oh god, yes, I feel as bad as this guy here, we've been, we've been in the works.
No, you don't feel as bad as him.
No, they've been waiting all along. Yeah, no, I know, I don't come one from... Um, but yeah, um, about like a year and a half or so now, we've been...
I just remember when they first came in, to, to turn that into a business zone.
Yep, yeah, we've been, uh, we've been waiting for a while.
I mean, there's only two businesses in there.
Correct, yep, it's all, it's all divided up.
Good answer.
Because then if, if it gets, if there's a third business that goes in, then you have to come to us for a site plan review.
Yeah, no, they have, that was part of the problems that we had with designing the front side of the building, is the owners of the building wanted to be able to have it designed and renovated now for in the future, if we bailed, or didn't want as much as we want, that they can proceed forward with all the proper building code and stuff, with handicapped ramps and all this other stuff that they've had to do. Which kinda makes it inconvenient for what I wanna do, but for them, as building owners going down the road, it makes sense. So if they, the time, I'm there for ten years, so it's gonna be what it's gonna be.
Excellent.
Well, it's gonna be whatever I have to make it be to pay for the place for ten years, let's put it that way. Whether it's my hobby shop or not, it's gonna have to be something.
It's gonna be something of yours.
It's gonna be something of mine for ten years.
Alright.
That's good, good luck.
I think that, that answered my biggest question for tonight, so, alright, thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming.
Alright, thank you.
Good luck, take care.
Uh, no, that's okay. What was that thing that you said we had to sign for our signatures?
Yeah, didn't we need something for the... No.
Oh, that's right here.
Mr. Corbett, we also need to do something for the registry of deeds, didn't we? I saw something for the registry of deeds in the mail.
Elections.
Oh, okay, that's right.
Okay. Oh, that's what I thought, that's why I was...
What, you checked the mail?
No, no, that's what I, I was in the mail the other day, cuz that's where my, uh, election form, sorry. So I threw out everything else, and I just grabbed my stuff. Don't eat it, don't eat it, don't eat it.
You got all your signatures?
I, I don't have all of them yet. Like twenty-nine or something.
She got twenty, that's, it's almost over.
Forty-five?
Forty, it is forty.
Yeah, forty, she said forty, and she said mark for you forty. I haven't done my neighborhood yet.
When do they do?
The twentieth?
Twenty-first.
Oh, I have plenty of them.
Twentieth, twentieth, don't tell them the twentieth, is what it is.
You can bring it to the ZBAM meeting.
Have everybody signed it, I'll get Wayne's signature, I'll get Shaw's.
It's gonna be at the high school.
Yeah. Good.
So on the plan, yeah, to be signed...
Yeah, we had it on creation, they didn't, nobody saw it, they didn't see it till just like last week, after they've already taken care of it.
And they recorded it.
Put it in and everything and...
So how did we vote?
Everybody voted yes.
Alright, good.
Did I?
I don't know, did you? You pull it out now. I'm hitting my check before I put it in. Make a difference now, that shows me.
Can you sign her name?
Uh, it's still a majority, no.
More, more ninety-nine, well, okay, so we're paying... Anybody read the minutes?
I did.
Looks good.
Did you through anything?
Do.
Oh, the, um...
Do you have a logo, Raj?
Raj, are you Cheryl Carlson?
Oh, gosh! Can I put it there? Can you print another copy?
I didn't, I didn't look at the name.
Yeah, I get blank checked, one sign here.
Yeah.
I was going in the other, you know. Sorry.
Oh, Lane's a, uh...
Lane's already, yeah.
That's good. Are they happy?
Hey Chris, how's the village thing coming along?
Village zoning, that's, I thought about that, cuz, you know, I seen C today.
Yeah, I was thinking about the same thing.
Oh, good, as long as everybody's thinking about it.
I haven't heard anything. I, I need to reach out to Eric on that.
Been a couple of months, hasn't it?
It's been a little while.
Since November?
When did he come before the board?
I think it was in January, but he was saying, "Yeah, we have a bunch of things we need to, this, this, to here, and we'll take care of it this spring."
I can't remember, I'll have to reach out to him. There's, uh...
I thought he was gonna come back soon.
There's a CMR PC meeting next week that I'm planning on going to, uh, I think it's in Grafton.
Grafton?
Yeah.
Oh, you're gonna do that one?
Yeah, whether, there's, there's two topics, I think it's solar bylaws.
Yep.
And medical marijuana bylaws.
Right, so we got, yeah.
Yeah, it gets secreted up here. People have to say about those things, that's next Thursday, I think.
Probably, um...
So I can't make the ZBAM, unfortunately.
That is gonna be crushed.
That is gonna be great.
Probably, um, what's her name, Catherine Boyle, for the mari- medical marijuana, you say?
Yeah.
She's the, um, the head legal for the Commonwealth. She used to be with the government, she was up already being, uh, Boyle, and she left there and went there. She's a top cookie. She knows her stuff.
Do you wanna approve the minutes while she's making that copy?
I had one change to the minutes. I think, uh, Cheryl was absent at the last meeting, or I think it says she was present.
Oh, that's true.
So maybe, motion to accept the, uh, minutes for March...
March twenty-third?
Twenty-third as...
Second.
He's not here.
So it was Chris' motion. Raj's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. So voted. And the motion was, as amended?
And we received notice that there's a public hearing being held by Mass DOT for the work going on at...
Oh, that's true.
Route one forty down by the landfill. I think it's May second, Monday?
May fourth?
What's this one?
Monday? It's May fourth.
Oh, this is Complete Streets, no, this is Complete Streets.
So May second.
This is, this is your Complete Streets reminder.
May second here somewhere.
Yeah, I got it.
Here in this building?
I have it.
I think so. And they're talking about, um...
What work are they proposing?
Hmm, look at the trees they tore down.
No, this is the, uh, one forty down by the landfill. They're proposing to do drainage work, but this is the area where it's a, proposing to do drainage, and they're gonna be working the catch basins. So it's similar to what the board sent the letter on, um, June thirtieth of last year. We may wanna do the same thing in advance of the meeting and then have someone attend.
Didn't we go, some of us go to a Mass DOT meeting last year?
Right, and this was for the Route twelve at the Causeway, and they incorporated the sidewalks, the pedestrian stuff, and the bicycle stuff.
Yeah.
This is the other one, this is now down at, um, actually, it might be the one over at Beaman Street, past my, uh, the DCR office over there. And also down at, near South Bay, down by the Oyster Palm Station on Route one forty. But both of those, we wanna keep that consistent, we wanna make sure that we have a, a wider paved area. Cuz right now, and I was gonna measure it, but I think we go from fifty feet in Boylestein, paved, wide open, nice sidewalk or...
Flat.
And then it narrows down to like thirty-two feet, thirty-three feet.
And goes into a...
And then an es- uh, reverse escur. And I don't know that they're proposing to make any alignment changes or any of that stuff, but it's a town road. The town owns it, and we should at least, under ten streets, it's like the perfect example, it's in the, um, it's in the list for the...
That's actually the only one I want fixed.
Good, good, and it's in the regional plan from Central Mass Regional Planning Commission and the Central Thirteen program. So they should've known about this for years.
Yeah.
But I know...
I know we raised it at the meeting, that a couple of us went to.
Right, but their response is that they're just doing the drainage, but they're doing drainage and resurfacing, and once you resurface the road, it doesn't get changed for five years, you can't change it, so if you're gonna resurface, it's on a road, widen it, it's not that tough. Widen it on the side away from the, you don't need a filler reservoir.
Yeah.
Widen it up, widen it on the other side, at least widen, I mean, it would be great to realign it.
Yeah.
But that's a huge project, I think, or a bigger project. Just add a foot and a half or two feet, moving guardrails back, so you're not getting squeezed in.
Well, and maybe do something, widen it over here and over here, so it straightens it out a little bit, you know?
At least you're biking on one side or something.
I don't know, well, let's not go crazy.
What we can get, I mean...
I mean, possible, but it's just a law.
Yeah, so you're not...
Right, so if somebody was on a bike and you were passing them, you're not in the wrong.
Right. I mean, it seems like common sense, I'm not surprised, because DOT has a requirement in their policy to make it bicycle and pedestrian friendly. And it's not being proposed, 'cause there's a caveat where you don't have to do it under drainage. But as a town, I mean, I've worked for the DCR, obviously, and we're trying to save money, but the DCR isn't paying for it, I don't think, I mean, it's not my job, but I don't know what's going on, and I've not gotten a presentation or any of that stuff, but as a town, we should try to get, we need as people using this. It's a great spot for bicycling, but everybody's free.
Well, when they have the bike races, they pull down the road.
Oh, yeah. But right in that area, there's a cross, if someone, if someone died, just a couple of months ago, they had an oil truck, or a dump truck, I think it was, it flipped over and the tanks were leaking.
Into the reservoir?
No, it was leaking off, and our responders did a really good job, and they took care of it and caught it. But, I mean, you always have accidents, they, they must replace their guardrails at least twice a year.
Did I say new?
They're always dinged up and stretched over.
Well, no, I think they get nailed with the plows, I think the plows...
They might be doing it, too. But there is a little pull-off there, so they can widen and do a little something, but...
Up there, but I think there's, there's a problem down, there's a, it drops right into the water there, and I don't know how much freedom that...
There's a stream, there's only a stream on the other side.
But it's still steep, I don't know how to measure it.
If you've got a stream there, all you have to do is put like a section, a twelve foot section of cover.
And then just dump it, yeah.
So they can cover that section of stream and do it, I mean, it's...
They just have to get the fill someplace.
Yeah, well, I'm sure there's fill in the... Yeah, well, I'm sure they still in the.
Maybe you're taking around.
They're digging it right out of the basins over at Route twelve.
Ugh, just bringing it across town and dumping it.
There's a road to fill there, but it's not the same timeframe.
Could be.
We need to get Mass DOT warmed up, so I would like to, the board to.
You think it's the, what dangerous thing it was?
To DOT and send it directly like this one, and then also hand-deliver it at the meeting.
That sounds good.
Just by somebody else who doesn't wanna lose their jo- job.
You could drop the letter, we'll sign the letter.
Right.
Just say all the right things, what date did you think it was?
It's a DOT meeting.
Yeah, Raj do it first, just make sure he does it in the right place.
It's in the silly, but it's a saving.
Would you say you thought it was May first, the Sunday, Monday, okay.
Just all that time.
Oh, it's already here, it's already there.
We had a motion while you were out.
For.
To approve the minutes with edits?
As amended.
As amended right there?
There you go.
Cheryl wasn't there.
That I read that on the other sheet that I've already read on, dressed up yesterday, I'm like, I don't remember.
Look, I already have it in there, see, DOT wants to one forty at dump, it was already in my schedule.
Wow.
I don't think I'll go, but it's already there, yeah, it was from an email I read from Dave.
So you're forgetting things really fast then.
I didn't know, I just typed it in. No, I think I typed it in at the, uh, Board of Selectment meeting where we actually found out about it.
Oh, that's weird, I will write, that's right.
Oh yeah, you're forgetting things just as good as me.
The project, the project that DCR is doing, the, the project that DCR is doing over at the Causeway.
The Causeway, yep.
I talked to, um, Mr. Finch, and, uh, about the underground, he said that he doesn't have any problem, he wants to do, he says they have any problem, so you hold the Horizon shot.
They don't have time to, right.
Which kind of stinks.
It would be great.
Which thing?
Burying the power lines over the Causeway.
All the lines that go over the Causeway.
They didn't get.
Get rid of all those telephone poles.
That would look great.
Yes, it would.
Another original.
Cheryl, Raj, you should come out over there.
Right.
Just did once, you know. So many things on my mind.
No, no, I got this thing from, do we wanna talk about the, uh, Lori Byrne's email? Those EBA meeting, I just let people, I got this in the.
What do we need to talk?
Concerned citizens.
Yeah, concerned citizens, sure. I think we should vote who we're gonna approve, we're gonna support.
She says.
Don't even say that.
I'm just. Did you receive that email, when she sent it in? I didn't receive this.
What email?
That, uh, email from the Lori Griffin.
And then it went out to everyone.
Know who she is.
She said CCW, you didn't receive, I didn't receive it at all.
You've got that.
What'd you?
I never say this.
You never seen it?
Nope.
Oh, right.
Toby did for whatever it is.
I mean, do we wanna do anything, cause it's really not our place to do anything on this.
I don't know that it's our place, I mean, I think.
Let them, let it go to the ZBA. More controversial.
The meeting is when?
April twenty-first.
Next Thursday.
I see, okay, so you wanna, anybody wants to go, go.
Yeah, it's at the high school, just so you know.
No, I think it's really, it's in the high school.
It's controversial, we don't.
Cause too many people complained about the overflow, they weren't even to discuss things, so they wanted.
I figure, it makes sense.
It's a good idea.
And we have, how do you wanna present your phone call?
Well, let's see, I got a call from this gentleman who's from Boylston, Canada, and I, I, I'm pretty sure it was marketing place because of all the background, and it's, he wanted to know if the town was interested in, uh, having a marijuana dispensary, a growing facility in town. He said they have three licenses, or whatever they call it with that, I'm not sure what they are, and he said he's got one in Pittsburgh and one in Newton.
One in Oyster.
And they didn't want to, no, no.
No, he owns two licenses.
Their, their garden remedies, is the name of the company, but, I told him, I just let you guys know, and see where it should start with, does it go to selectmen, or who does it go to, and but he wouldn't, he wouldn't send any information, I said, why don't you please send something to the board, that could be something we did not wanna do that, he said he was afraid that somehow the press would get involved, and they would hear about it, he would not send me any information.
He's got two licenses though, he knows about the whole procedure, which is.
Yeah, that's why I think they're.
Get approval from, let's get approval from the state, I mean, there's all.
On the phone call, you could just hear that many, many, many people in the back, it was just like, you know, if you called for support, like, you know, you called Tucker or called somebody, and it was a marketing, that's all.
And, and what, is he gonna call back, or you have his number, or are you gonna get back?
I told you the message at the, the work here, cause I called from another number, I said, told you his number, so, um, I told him tomorrow, I'll let him know. I mean, did you go to the selectmen first, did you go to us first?
Well, but, what's he, he's saying, are we interested? Well, we have a bylaw in town that allows it in the industrial district, so, it's allow, it's allowed use, with a site plan review, it has a process, but have them, send them to our bylaws and say, look at the zoning bylaws, section.
I mean, we, as the planning board, we would encourage him to do whatever he wants to do, but we're not looking for, looking for it nor denying it, yeah.
Yeah, I just thought it was kind of strange, he didn't wanna send any information off for us to even look at.
They should go over there into the motel next to his, that's a free building now.
Thought that's what they were doing over there.
For water, yeah, that's what they're doing anyways.
No, there's nobody over there.
There you go. Yep, sign time sheet, and then the other thing.
Uh, and the open space committee met, we have a open space and rec plan survey that's up on the town's internet site, on the website, we want people to provide input, um, we're gonna use this to, to try to revise the current open space and rec plan, which is being done by CMRPC, and it's moving along, moving along very quickly, we're hoping to have another meeting, actually a public hearing in June, well, the survey is gonna be up and available until May sixth, at that time, we'll compile all the information, and at a meeting in June, early June or so, we're gonna hold a public information session on what we've compiled from information on the survey, what other information the CMRPC has put together with the master plan, the open space, the old open space plan, the new Goodyear Park plan, and how things in the, in the Parks Commission is also making changes to their plans, and having some good ideas of what can be done, and we're gonna try to incorporate all that stuff, and come up with one plan that the whole town can get behind, so that's.
Survey is online, it's there.
Survey is, yes.
Yeah, the email went out.
You should have an email.
Where are mine?
You can, there's a link right in the.
On the front page of the town website.
Front page, at least that's what Karen said it was gonna be, I haven't looked, but I'm pretty sure it's.
On the site.
I thought it was a pretty comprehensive questionnaire, I thought it was.
I didn't do the question written aloud, I didn't do the, fill out yet, though.
I think, we're gonna get some good information.
Yeah, exactly.
And, I mean, I'm not sure.
What you're looking for.
Right, I mean, what the town wants is what we're gonna try to provide, and, and maybe it's, if they start asking for sailing on the reservoir, they can ask, but that we can't provide, but.
I'd like ATVs in the, in the grounds around the reservoir.
That's a great idea.
It is.
Can break that one in, I don't think that's on the list.
I don't see it. Are there any fill-in, fill-in others?
There is another, but this time, when I was drafting, drafting the survey, I didn't put so many.
You were drafting the survey?
With CMRPC, with the Open Space Committee, when we were all reviewing what was in there, the last survey we did, we had a lot of other and optional fillings, and.
But it was trouble when.
We got a huge worth of interesting comments and some nasty comments, and.
Right.
It's hard to qualify guidance when it's all over the place.
What are we supposed to do with the, this, are we gonna write the real bylaw? Oh no, we'll discuss it again next week.
Wh- wh- so between now and next week, I will maybe prepare sort of another updated draft.
Okay.
Based upon.
Our discussion with.
Feedback, and I guess we can finalize it after we discuss.
Next week.
Sign by law?
Yeah.
That makes sense? Yeah, so we can have a proposal to the Selectmen for an article wording as of the April twenty-seventh meeting.
Yeah.
I think that's okay with their timeframe.
When do we have to get it to, to Dunquart for?
I mean, they, they should already be on notice that there will be. We have a placeholder.
A placeholder article, right?
Yeah, that.
Doesn't it also have to go to the bylaw committee?
Yeah, that, that, I mean, that doesn't change anything, like, two hours before.
Then I'm going, right, if that.
Well, it might, cause they're putting some time into the wetlands bylaw.
I know, but we won't let them. But that's a brand-new bylaw, I mean, with changes, I don't think.
They'll have it. They will have the opportunity, cause they have some good minds on that committee.
Mine is, is very good, it's the language and that sort of thing.
Yep, so I think it's helpful to have that, cause.
Well, they're all good, but mine is, he, he was picking out all the, so the language and what this really does, and what that really does, we really should change this to eliminate that ambiguity.
Yep, so that's good, so, it's nice to have help instead of just writing something, having the wrong view on it, finding out a year later. Yeah, I know we also wanted to go through the sign by law, to see if there were other sections that we also had to change.
Oh, the decorum?
Yeah, the, the, whether it was the ten-foot setback, hundred square feet, if, if it appeared and more than one.
Right, say, okay.
Yeah.
I, I, I wanna make an attempt at that.
I might go for a pass at that. That's a good idea.
Citizen's coming.
The sign, the sign by law, or bylaws, um.
It's okay.
Oh, it's.
Keep going.
She said time's up.
No, she's, Dave, Dave is up.
Um, maybe the board should, uh, look at the accessory and hop in bylaw.
Oh yeah, but not for this year.
No, I'm just.
We should look at all of them.
Further, further reading.
I shouldn't have run, and I should've said we should look at all of them, that's what we should.
So what do you want to change it to?
I didn't say anything about change, I just said, just.
Take a look at it?
Take a look at it.
Actually, I looked, I looked at it.
Cause it just seems like it was done in nineteen eighty-six, you know, thirty years ago, and now it seems we've already had, what, two of the last six months? You know, from the one we approved.
I don't know what's up, I don't know what's going on with the ZBA these days, but you're having all the weird things come through the door, it's like.
But, but the accessory.
What's going on in the ZBA?
Don't you think the accessory apartment bylaw is very clear?
Well, I didn't.
Do we wanna change it to be more like what we want, I think is.
Yeah, I, I thought that, that's very clear.
They had two people, two applicants, two reviews, they wanted to try to wiggle and do it, not the way that it was written, do we, and you, the ZBA stood and said, no, this is what it says, you need to do this, this, this.
The first one, in my personal opinion, the first one was done correctly, the first one was done correctly, in my opinion.
Yep.
Okay, because every, we went, I went right by each step, and the person, the petitioner had everything. The second one was off the chart.
Right, I agree with that, yes.
So, you know, I don't think.
But was there anything, I guess, was there anything wrong or that could be added to the bylaw to make it easier and clearer to address any issues that came up?
Well, the thing with the second one was, it was because of a sale, you know.
Let, that would be if someone came in here.
Right.
We run into the same issue.
What I'm, basically what I'm saying to you is that, you know, if you're gonna look at the bylaws, the zoning bylaws, you know, whatever, I would say because that seems to be an old one, and now it's starting to come up again, and it seems like a lot of the residents are, are against it, okay? Maybe it's something that's somewhere down the line in future agenda, you know, it might be something you might wanna look at, and maybe have another, um, you know, public hearing, and, you know, listen to what people say, and then maybe do something, I, I'm just making this suggestion, that's all it is.